We're on.
We're on?
We're on.
Okay, hey, welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, March 18th, 2013. Let's start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice, please receive it. Okay, tonight, we're gonna start with read mail, followed by public input at 6:10. At 6:15, we've got the Council on Aging Team Building Recommendations. 6:30, we've got the May 6, 2013 Annual Special Town Meeting Pilot Review Committee, Nexon Energy, Planning Board, Zoning Amendments, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Subsection 5, Referral. School Committee, School Security Fund, Special Town Meeting, Personnel Board, Personnel Bylaw Amendments, Community Preservation Committee Fiscal Year 2014 Appropriations, Board of Water Commissioners, Enterprise Fund Betterment, Board of Health, Community Septic Loan Program, Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study, Preliminary Design, and Other Articles. 7 o'clock, we'll have the Congregational Church Meadow Property Trust for Public Land. 7:30 Conservation Commission Wetland Protections Bylaw Amendment, Application, Filing Fee, Structure, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Subsection 22F. 7:50 Town Administrator Assistant Town Administrator for Finance and Budget Fiscal Year 2014 Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Plan, and then Collective Bargaining Update. 8 o'clock, we'll have the Consent Agenda and Minutes of Approval. Okay, Mr. Bergman, the mail.
Mr. Chairman, a couple of items. First, we have a notice from the School Committee of the position of Nesho Valley Tech High School District Alternate. We are accepting applications through the 29th of March. It is a joint appointment that's made by the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Town Moderator, and we're scheduled to have a joint meeting on the 4th of April at 7:10 jointly with the School Committee to make that appointment.
Who's showing up for that meeting on the 4th?
I haven't confirmed yet. I don't know where.
Ted and Joe, I think.
Ted and Joe.
I can probably do it.
I'm gonna be in Louisville in business, so I will not be in town. We need to make sure we have a time.
Okay, next is an invitation from Littleton Community Television for their open house, which is going to be on Tuesday, April 2nd, from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m., and there will be a ribbon cutting, I think sometime between 3:00 and 4:00, highlighting the new improvements to the studio. It really looks great over there. As we were saying earlier before we went on the air, with the new equipment, if we can just figure out how to turn the lights on, both banks of lights in this room without making a loud noise that interferes with the broadcast will be all set. Another item in our mail packet is the approval from the Attorney General, both of the bylaws that were passed by last November's town meeting. One of them was some changes to the bylaw in town meetings that implemented the recommendations of the study committee to enhance voter participation that strikes the requirement for us just to send a postcard out in advance of town meeting, and instead, we will send out the entire town meeting booklet. And so, that is in effect. And the other bylaw that was approved was the valuable secondhand items bylaw. There's frankly several pages worth of comments that the Attorney General's office has included, which incorporates some guidance that the Board of Selectmen would need to follow in implementing the bylaw. So, we'll be scheduling time on the Board's next agenda to go over that list as we prepare to implement the bylaw. So, that's it for this.
So, it's on hold until we create these regulations?
No. No, it takes effect the second time that it is published in the newspaper, and I think, I'm not sure if this Thursday is the first time, or it might be, we're at least, I think we're at least two weeks away from the effective date. So, we have a discussion on the 25th of March. We'll be, still be acting before it takes effect.
All right, very good. Public input, board members, any public input?
Just like to congratulate the board's basketball team. They made it to the final four and lost in the first round, so congratulations to them. Great season.
Clark Tournament Champions also.
Clark Tournament Champions, yeah, first year ever.
Audience, public input? Any? Okay. All right, we'll move right along then to the Council on Aging Team Building Recommendations Memorandum of Agreement. Keith, you wanna walk us through this?
Sure, and we have with us here tonight, Council on Aging Chair Mary Dugan and our Acting Director of Eldered Human Services, Pamela Hamel. So, welcome. Last, December, the Council on Aging Board agreed to embark on a team-building exercise to try to address some issues of what the proper role is of the Council on Aging itself and the staff, and how best to interact with one another. And we brought in a facilitator from outside, from the Mass. Interlocal Insurance Association, our insurance provider, and we worked, we had a working group comprised of several members of the COA and the staff, who, over the last several months, I think, got input from just about every, I think we had all but one member of the COA Board who was participating in that process. And what it resulted in were the document you see here tonight, which is a proposed memorandum of agreement between the Board of Selectmen and the Council on Aging, which has been unanimously approved by all 11 members of the COA at their meeting last week. And what it would do is establish for the benefit of seniors in Littleton, so-called best practices here that councils on aging throughout the Commonwealth have been doing. And what that means specifically is that the COA wants to establish for itself, establish itself rather in an advisory role, as with other councils on aging, and provide for the appointment of the director of the department by the town administrator with the council on aging approval, as well as the approval of the Board of Selectmen. That's sort of been in a nutshell. What led us to that point, though, was just a series of meetings where we talked for a long time about what the role was, what the role the COA wanted to have, and how they wanted to spend their time, really as a policy board, in setting up guidance on what programs we should put in place to meet the needs of the senior, and not so much the day-to-day operations of the department, that that was something that they just wanted to move away from. So, with a lot of good discussion, a lot of back-and-forth negotiations, we reached the final form of a document here. Actually, a month ago, the Council on Aging Board unanimously adopted sort of some vision statements of what they wanted to be, in an advisory capacity, establishing roles for itself, its chair, its director, and the administration. And the working group was then tasked to bring them back the documents that would do that. And what we've done is, it's basically a couple of things. First is a revised memorandum of agreement between your two boards. You've had several in the past, but this would set forth yet again a procedure for hiring the director and supervising the staff. It would also call for submitting, codifying this all in a town bylaw, which would get submitted to town meeting in May. We would have the authority, just with the memorandum of agreement, to change the procedure for the appointments, the way that the appointments happen. But if we wanted to codify that, so it's in place for the future, and not just in a document like this, the next step would be a town meeting vote. What does it mean to have best practices for council on aging? Well, that document is attached, that there was a multi-page document that was brought here and that we received some training on back a few months ago from the Executive Office of Elder Affairs, and so that that becomes an important part of what our vision is here. And also, the rules and regulations that the COA Board adopts for itself have been revised by the COA's vote last week, and that document is attached here as well. So, we're, it's been a, it's been a very active discussion that's been going on, really, for the last three months, and we're glad to reach this point. I'm delighted to be able to say that it was unanimously approved, and that all the COA Board members signed it, because I think it, you know, points us in a new direction so that we can, so that we can, you know, go forward from here. So, I'm pleased.
The Chair to...
Make a comment.
To make comment?
We're grateful to the town for the support through this process. I think, you know, everybody agrees that we want to embody best practices for elder affairs in this state, and I think with this document, that's what we've done. So, we've basically taken what was a well-functioning, successful department and made it even better. So, thank you, really, for supporting us throughout this process. And I don't know if the... I'm happy.
Sounds like the whole board's happy.
Yes.
Our board members, any comments?
I just have, I went to some of the very, very early meetings, and I'm happy with the document. I read through it, and I loved it so many times, the subject of the approval of the COA, so the COA is always involved in any decisions, it's not like they're left out of it, so they still have, you know, anything brought before them is still subject to that. So, I think that the agreement overall, you could tell it was worked on for a long period of time, so I congratulate you all on it.
Thank you.
I have just one question. Does this result in any change in job descriptions?
No. The job description of the director's been in place, the supervision has been, has been done under the last several agreements by the town administrator, but we're, let me answer one thing, though. It's a practical matter, and it establishes it in the MOA, that the intent is that the position, that the director would appoint her own department head, subject to the town, the department staff, rather, subject to the town administrator's approval, as we have in other departments, say like Highway, or Finance, or whatever. So, we're establishing that process, and that's helpful, because we had the issue some months ago, who appoints the Martin, who appoints the Martin dispatcher? And the answer with this MOA would be the director subject to the town administrator's approval. The other answer might have been Board of Selectmen, which means that we'd be bringing new Martin dispatchers and van drivers for appointment, or other personnel matters, which is not the intent of how we function. So, it's basically, it's the same, it's the same job responsible position that we'd crafted.
So, this puts it pretty much on a par with the others that were yearly appointing authority on this?
Yes, yeah, what, there's a list of departments, and in fact, the proposed change to the bylaw would simply drop in the Director of Eldered and Human Services right next to Finance Director, the LCTV Executive Director, Highway, Information Technology, the other departments that are subject to the town administrator's appointment with the Selectmen approval.
Ted, you good?
Yeah.
I'll look for a motion.
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to execute the revised memorandum agreement with the Council on Aging COA to implement in Littleton for the benefit of its seniors' best practices. For Council on Aging endorsed by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs, including establishing the COA in an advisory role, and providing for the appointment of the Director of Eldered and Human Services by the town administrator with the approval of the COA and the Board of Selectmen, and to insert on the May 6, 2013 Annual Town Meeting a warrant article to so amend the town code.
Second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Nice job.
We have two originals of that MOA document that will circulate for the board's signatures.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Got you out early, too. Need to wait till 6:30 for this town meeting. Is Bonnie coming tonight? Is she coming later?
She is on route from Amherst to training, and I don't think she's gonna be here anytime soon.
She thinks she's gonna make 7:50?
Yeah.
All right. Why don't we tackle some of these minutes, since we've got everybody here?
All right, let's see. We'll go with, let's see, here, Ted, Chairman. Make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, March 11.
Second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
We can do the other one as well. Move, make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, February 25, 2013.
Second. Moving second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We've got the pilot review committee here. Yeah, we can probably start with the pilot review.
Including yourself.
Yeah, including yourself. Let's talk about the pilot review. Hi. Had a couple of meetings that we went through, and why don't you kind of give the Board an update on that, as to what we got, what we're gonna receive out of this?
The proposal is by Nexon Energy to build a 4-megawatt solar generating plant at the warehouse site on Distribution Center Circle. 3 megawatts will be on the roof, and 1 megawatt will be on the ground. The ground portion, I've been told by Aaron Toohill of the Planning Board, when it was discussed with them, that it would be on land that wouldn't be available for construction of another building. It's in their...
The wetland protection?
Well, they're pervious soil, and the solar panels allow for rainwater or whatever to flood.
Right, they're not impervious.
Right. So, it was with that information, and plus the roof mount, that these, the property that existed there was probably maxed out. This was an additional tax that wouldn't interfere with other buildings coming or anything else. So, it was an addition to the primary site. The negotiation ended with the first 10 years of the pilot, payment in lieu of tax, to be at $20,000 a megawatt, or $80,000 a year payment to the town. And that's for the first 10. For the next 10 years, it would be for 17,500 per megawatt, $17,500 per megawatt, or $75,000 a year for the second 10 years. In all, they would pay the town over a 20-year period, $1,500,000 in payment in lieu of tax. And the committee was made up, I suppose I should remind you, if you forgot, Chairman Chapman, Treasurer of Anody, myself, Betsy, from the Finance Committee, and Kevin Gaudet from the Light and Water Department. Like I said, we had three, or four, four meetings, actually, and we discussed the process, the valuing, the state laws relating to establishing a pilot. And we believe we've got a fair program that's good for the town and good for the owner of the energy program, and good for Littleton and green energy.
Yeah, do you wanna talk about what Nexon wanted to pay us from where we ended up? Just to kind of give a flavor to the audience and the people listening at home, I mean, they were offering less than $30,000 per year in payment.
They were offering nothing to start with.
Nothing to start, but then we got them...
They wanted to be tax-free. We ended up with the average of the last four pilots granted in Massachusetts. We took, we took, we did the research from, got the information from the DOR, and we did it on an average. We think that's favorable to us, because the, where the placement of the panels are, it was like free money. They weren't gonna put a second story on top of the warehouse. So, they're utilizing space, they're making money, we're allowed to either tax them under Chapter 59, which we wouldn't be here for if it was regular taxation, the assessors would do it, but because they wanted tax certainty for a period of time, the law allows a pilot to be given, and the law allows for a 20-year pilot. It matches their contract with the municipal light department, whom they're selling all their energy to. And it helps, it works with their financing, so it works good for both sides. And this practical side of the matter is, once you guys vote to put it on the warrant, town meeting, if they choose to ratify it or approve it, it's a done deal. They send in the check on an annual basis, there's no appealing the assessment or going to the appellate tax board, it's set for 20 years.
You might wanna share with the audience what that means if they do attempt to appeal, just so people know what's involved in that.
Well, under, any tax...
We're just inserting articles here, this, right? I mean, that's what we're doing.
Correct.
You're gonna have to say all this at town meeting, too, right? Not to cut them off or anything, I just think...
You think that's enough?
Well...
I'd like to hear it.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure, certain that everybody knows that tonight, we're just inserting articles, that we're not making any decisions...
Correct.
No decisions being made. I just wanna make sure the folks know that.
That's correct. Yeah, we're inserting the article, but it's good to get this information out.
I'll go with that.
Go ahead.
Okay, any property that's taxed can appeal it. Typically, January is the month, you have a 30-day window from your first actual tax bill, which is the January tax bill typically. You have 30 days to appeal it. You can state your reason that you feel your property's overvalued, because before the Board of Assessors, we do our research to confirm the assessment, look into the rationale of the appeal, and can either grant an abatement or denial. If we deny, it can be appealed to the appellate tax board, and that becomes expensive, because that's a, typically, we'd go in with an attorney and an expert witness, be it an engineer, architect, certified appraiser.
So, the bottom line is that it costs us a lot of money, potentially.
It could.
For an uncertain outcome.
For an, yeah.
This locks in the outcome, this locks in the outcome for the 20 years.
For 20 years.
You can take that money to the bank.
Yep.
Mail in the check.
So, we'll be going, the list that we're doing in this agenda item is to go through all the remaining articles to be inserted.
Do you wanna insert them one at a time, particularly where there's presentations being done here? Would that be the best protocol? Or do we wanna just go through the presentations and insert them all at once?
It might work best if you put in, you know, something like this.
Just to do it?
Just go ahead and do it.
Just go ahead and do it.
Do that one, and then go back.
Yeah. Is that all right with the board?
Yeah. I do have one question.
Go ahead.
Where does this amount compare if you tax them, if you put them in the regular tax
That's an excellent question, Alex. It matters whose opinion of value you take, and that's why the whole appeal process is so well noted by Greg. We went to, Bonnie and I went to a presentation from the Department of Revenue on valuing solar plants. There's the subsidy that's granted by the state, or the federal government, called SREC, Solar Energy Credits, and those are marketed on the open market. They amount to one-half to two-thirds of the income of the project, what the value of these SREC credits are. And it's fluctuating, because it's sold on commodity, like a commodity. So, it depends upon what the value of the SREC credit is to the total value of the project. So, to be specific about answering your question, on a first year with an SREC credit being sold for $200, they're getting maybe a 30% or 40% discount to tax. In the 10th year, when SREC credits go away, because the government no longer feels they have to subsidize solar, then they'll be intact, they'll be being taxed greater than their value. So, it's guess at what the value of the SREC credit is. They had to sell theirs over a seven-year period, and they sold it for $110 a credit, because they sold it over a period. But you know you can sell a one-year credit for $200. So, it's kind of a guess when the income approach to value looks at the income, and half to two-thirds of the income is based on these credits, which is the subsidy to get solar energy companies off the ground, so...
And plus, there were a lot of towns that had started this process at a much lower rate than we were at.
Oh, much, much lower. They proposed legislation last year, which didn't get passed, but it would have been for 5,000 megawatt standing pilot, and we did four times that, so...
Just out of curiosity, how big is this site compared to like that one that's on Route 70 in Lancaster?
I don't know how big that site is in Lancaster.
I don't know, but I'll find that out.
I mean, the majority of this is on the roof, going to be on the roof of the Distribution Center, down behind the old sand dale. Eighty percent of it is gonna be on the roof, and 20 percent is on the roof.
Three-quarters, sure.
Three-quarters, 75 percent.
So, a motion to insert?
Yeah, so...
Solar.
That's what we're looking for at this point.
Do we do it by number, or just...
No. The number, well, you can, for reference, but the numbers aren't planned out.
Move that Board of Selectmen vote to insert an article for payment in lieu of taxes solar onto the warrant for the Monday, May 6 Annual Town Meeting, subject to its approval as formed by Town Council.
Second, is all those in favor?
Aye.
Who's? Does that make sense, guys?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, Planning Board, zoning amendments, Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Subsection 5, Referral.
And the Chair of the Planning Board is here. There are two articles that are ready to go. One is Open Space Development, the other is a temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers, both of which the Planning Board is bringing to town meeting. There procedurally, you're inserting the articles on the warrant and referring them as zoning amendments back to the Planning Board under Chapter 40A, Section 5. The only other topic that was discussed at the Planning Board meeting last week was the, or potential article, was amendments to the extensive recreation bylaw as part of a larger discussion that's going on with the Fletcher. of a larger discussion that's going on with the Fletchers. And I know the Planning Board has scheduled a meeting on the twenty-eighth of March for eight-thirty to meet again with the Fletchers and discuss their property. That takes place after the warrant closes, though the warrant closes this, this Friday at, at noon time. And there was some thought that, that the Planning Board might be ready to proceed with another zoning amendment, but from my discussion with Mark, Chairman Montanari earlier today, I don't think that that's the case, and I just thought he could update us on that.
Yeah, John, this is a, as you know, we've been going around with this for about four years, and it's not something we just want to rush into. We have basically a rough draft from the, Doug Duchesne, who's the lawyer for the Fletchers. We've had no public input. We don't know whether we're going to do it as an extension of the extensive recreation or if we're going to do it as farmland preservation. Maron is, is unavailable right now, and she's basically the one who puts everything together, and researches other towns and things. So I just don't think we're going to be ready to give something of value on the twenty-second when we're going to meet, we're, we're asking the selectmen and the conservation and board out and everyone to meet with us on the twenty-eighth to talk about this, this extensive recreation or farmland preservation, either that we want to put time wide in. I just don't think we're going to have enough input and no residential input before the twenty, before the twenty-second, before we can have any sort of verbiage to close the warrant out.
So, so the only thing you have at this point is verbiage from the applicant?
Right. Yeah, I think maybe a little more than just that. That's, that's the reason I talked Keith into, with our Chris and Tom, and suggested maybe we either put up the bare minimum in there or just kind of shove it until we really have some, some language that we can hopefully, you know, this is going to be an interesting article at town meeting, at the very least, we want to get it right the first time.
So at this point, the articles that you have are, are the open space development and temporary moratorium. And on the printed motions, if you want to do number two, which refers to the referrals to handle those two.
I have a question on the open space development, Mark. What is the major changes to the paragraph?
What we're trying to do with the open space, because now, as you know, we have shared systems in the town. And before, it was always assumed that we'd have a septic system on a lot, and we'd use that to count how many lots you have. By, by having the, the potential for a shared system, which we want to make, we're changing the bylaw so that at our, at our request, if we deem it necessary, we can ask the developer to show us that those lots do burn, so we have a number to go by when you're going from a conventional to an open space. As it is right now, the last one that we dealt with, we didn't have that luxury, because the developers said, shared system, we can get as many lots in as we can. So there was no baseline to, to decide whether open space was better than conventional. So that's what we're, we're trying to tighten up that loophole.
But I thought that open space was specifically in regards to land and property that a developer was going to leave open.
Correct.
So, so, I mean, you're changing based on what septic systems can go in?
No, but in the old days, like if you look at Gray Farm, if you look at Delaney and all those, they were based on, say, a thirty-acre parcel that could get sixteen houses on it conventionally. They would come and show us that the septic system would burn. Then they would come back with an open space plan that showed those sixteen houses and maybe five acres or six acres, and the rest of the land was left in its natural state. You needed a baseline, you needed to know that sixteen would fit on there in order to, to go to the open space component of it. Now with shared systems, we don't have a measuring stick to tell us how many houses can fit on that sixteen acres. As it is right now, you could count ledgers, you could count, you know, leads where you couldn't, where you couldn't put a septic system in that. We don't have, we don't have the ability to ask the, ask the developer to show us that the property actually will burn, and that's what we're asking for is delivered. We can see perks up there on any, any project going forward of ten acres or more.
Well, I think that.
I don't understand the point.
Well, we're just, we're just inserting this on and referring it back to Planning Board, I don't know if we need a, do we need a long discussion tonight? If we want to talk about it, we can go to the Planning Board. You said you haven't had a public hearing yet, right?
We have had one.
You have not had public input yet, is what I thought you said. So there must be something coming up.
Correct.
The public hearing is on the twenty-eighth.
Why is it twenty-eighth?
Eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock, okay. So that's for the both of these?
No, just the first one.
Open space, okay. So.
No, it's not for this one.
It's for the, it's for the open space one. The public hearing's on open space at eight o'clock on the twenty-eighth. The date for the public hearing on the, on the medical marijuana moratorium is.
Okay. And then there was a third one that you said you might be bringing forward, but you're not going to have that ready, you said. And that was for Fletcher?
For Fletcher.
Okay. So, I mean, if I have any concerns, I'm going to wait till the twenty-eighth. I mean, I, I do have some concerns, I mean, now that I have an idea, I may want to form an opinion and go, go.
I just wanted to know the differences.
Yeah, no, that's fine, but I just, you know, as far as going back and forth, then we'll be.
Want to add some to that?
Yeah, Don McKinnon, Hall, is in Planning Board. And I know when Maron was working on, to work with Town Council, and a lot of the open space changes are based upon the Framingham Open Space Bylaw. And as Mark was saying, that it's really to look at what's buildable as a baseline. You know, and there were some verbiage about what was buildable, what's not, it wasn't very good.
Okay.
So this approves it. So, yeah, this is something we've been working on for a while.
So we'll, we'll wait till we see the details, we'll just insert the article at this point. Okay, and then the other, the other article on the amendment, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment.
The Attorney General, last week approved, disapproved the town of Wakefield's outright ban on medical marijuana facilities, which had voted earlier this year, but approved the town of Burlington's one-year temporary moratorium. So everybody's jumping on the Burlington bandwagon, including us, with a, with a one-year moratorium proposal. The State Department of Public Health has not yet issued its regulations to implement the vote that was passed by the voters last November in legalizing the facilities. But the A G has upheld a one-year moratorium to study it, to study the impacts in your, in your own community. So that's what our Planning Board is proposing to do.
It's just weird to, to look at it, so we don't know.
And the language that Town Council drafted, just cut and paste in Burlington, and just change the section numbers to conform with our bylaw.
Any discussion?
Just one thing to Mark, I went to the M M A meeting, and they had a course on this, and everything that one of the persons said came true, because the lady from Wakefield was there and said how they put the ban in. Next, they thought that was the idea, the next person got up and talked with a moratorium, because there's no way that you can.
Sorry about that.
There's no way that you can ever ban it outright when the, when the actually, state is actually voting for it. Then they asked someone from the state to give their input, and the state didn't have any answers on how they were going to do things yet, so having a moratorium is the only thing you can do right now.
All right. Anything else? Those are the only two for planning, right?
Yes.
So let's, I'll look for a motion to insert these two articles, Article twenty and twenty-one on the.
You want to insert those and then to refer them to the.
Yeah, and refer them to the, to the Planning Board.
This is Act Number twelve, Minnesota National Law, Chapter forty-eight, subsection five, to refer to the Planning Board before proposed amendments received for the May sixth, two thousand thirteen annual town meeting, open space development, and the temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers.
Move in second, is it all of us in favor?
Aye.
Who's? Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Is that actually insert, and do I see anything that actually says to insert those on the warrant? It says refer here.
Okay.
Insert.
Did you say it?
I just said it now.
Okay.
Refer and insert.
Refer and insert, we don't have that, that catch.
Next is.
Next is the, let's see, I'll follow my, the school committee.
Yeah. One is, and, and the Chair is here, one is to put an article in the special town meeting warrant to expand the purposes for which an old article can be used, to include school security purposes, so that you can buy panic buttons for the.
Everything.
Shaker Lane, yeah, everything's up, the middle school. And so, and so that article has been drafted to expand the scope, there was some money left over in an article from a few years ago.
As Keith has mentioned, as we do some security upgrades and looking at things in the four buildings, one of the things is panic buttons that we'd like to install in three of the buildings, the fourth being the middle school already has it. We've received a quote for about eighty-two hundred dollars. As our business manager has gone through the books, I discovered that back in two thousand and eight, special town meeting November, for a fire alarm system put in Shaker Lane for twenty thousand dollars, there remains roughly fifty-one hundred dollars on that article. So it'd be no new money, it's money that's already been appropriated for use by the town, it's just, as Keith said, transference of use that from the fire alarm at Shaker Lane to be applied towards at eighty-two hundred dollars for the panic buttons in the other three buildings. The remaining three thousand dollars will come out of internal school district funds, so that's where that's going to come from. You may have seen also another seventy-five hundred dollar issue that we'll be working with the FinCom, back tomorrow night, I'll care in front of FinCom, for the seventy-five hundred dollars to look at moving some money from reserve fund, and this would be for a study. So interrelated, two separate issues as far as the seating, but interrelated as far as security upgrades at the school.
And the only other thing that, that we've addressed in our latest draft of the warrant, but there were references in the capital article in the annual town meeting to, on the schools' projects to, also to the P M B C and the school committee, and at the school committee's request, we've taken out the reference to P M B C and ran it by the P M B C Chair, it was okay. I just wanted to make sure he didn't ask about on the floor town meeting, so we're all set, and we've made that change.
And this is on the special town meeting?
Yeah, this is just to insert that article in the special.
What article number is that?
Security is number eight. And I didn't see the other one. What did we consider, you?
It's eight?
No, there's only one article here.
Okay, on the special.
Yeah. The other one is the reserve fund transfer.
Maybe it's only one right there.
So it's Article eight of the special, security upgrade for Littleton Public Schools.
Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm ready for a motion if you guys are, unless there's any other discussion. Let's go.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the article for security upgrades for Littleton Public Schools onto the warrant for the Monday, May sixth, special town meeting, subject to approval as to formed by Town Council.
Move in second, is it all of us in favor?
Aye.
Who's?
Got it.
Thank you. Thank you, Eevee, for the capital as well, Keith.
No, no changes.
Okay. Since the last time.
I did send you an email about inviting you to the budget hearing this Thursday, and then just to make it a personal invite to you all, this Thursday evening, seven, ten is the public hearing, the school community meeting, and that'll be at the Littleton Police Community Room, you're all invited.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
So can we clean up the special town, go to Page Article nine, the amendment for Gilson Road?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
Sure, yeah. I don't think we're having the water commissioners here, so.
It's a, this is a request from the Water Department, they wanted what, extend the water main on Gilson Road and proposing to do a bybetterment. The details are to be worked out, but we do need to insert the article on, on the warrant to do that.
All right, ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the following articles, Article nine, water betterment on Gilson Road for the May, Monday, May sixth, two thousand thirteen special town meeting, subject to the rule as to, one by, as to, formed by Town Council.
Second. Move in second, is it all of us in favor?
Aye.
Does it pose?
Next, the next one we have is Personnel Board proposed amendments to the Personnel Bylaw. We are not bringing forward any changes to the schedules for permanent full or part-time employees. We do however have the annual, the seasonal schedule, seasonal and temporary, the Park and Rec Commissioners have, have voted to request, and the Personnel Board has, has recommended, which actually brings in the numbers at lower amounts than, that they did a salary survey and saw frankly we're paying a little more than, than what other communities are, so they're proposing a salary schedule which is uniformly less for next year than, for this year rather than it was for last year. So you were asked to insert that article on the warrant.
Okay. So is that a discussion?
Well, is a, is a plumbing and gas inspector being inserted to it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it adds the position of a plumbing and gas inspector as a, as an employee.
That was contracted, now it's employee.
Yeah, that we had addressed, that's right, we had addressed the wiring inspector at, by the time that we went to the November town meeting, and said we'd come back with the other, with the other inspector when we graded the position, and we've done that.
Okay. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the article for the Personnel Board, Personnel Bylaw Amendments onto the warrant for the Monday, May sixth, annual town meeting, subject to approval as to formed by Town Council.
Move in second, is it all of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay, hold on.
Next one.
C P C?
Yeah, Community Preservation Committee voted last Tuesday night to submit its recommendations for the coming year. It includes some capital projects that we, that Bonnie had made us aware, two hundred thousand dollars for the three hundred King Street project that Park and Rec is working on, twenty thousand for the vault dehumidifier for the town clerk, and fifteen thousand for the regional housing service office. So that plus its regular debt service amounts that they pay in administration in their budget requests for this year.
Do you know if any of those funds were coming out of the general, or is it all out of the individual?
This is all coming from C P C.
But out of their individual buckets?
Correct.
Sounds undesignated.
I, I, yeah, I was talking, general fund or undesigned? Yes, I think that is coming from undesigned, the two hundred thousand for three hundred King Street.
Yeah.
That comes directly from undesigned, because there is no recreation bucket. Another component.
I thought we had a recreation.
No, it's only, no, it's only three.
You have, you, you have open space and community housing and historic resources, those are the only three you're required to have accounts for.
Did that change?
No, no, the recreation is the, recreation is the fourth purpose for which you can spend C P A funds, but there's no, there's no allotment for those money unless you put it in. No, it's ten percent each for those three, and then the recreation is the fourth that's eligible, but you, they only get what you give them.
Right, okay, that makes sense. But the other, the other project for the vault is coming out of.
Historic.
Historic.
Yes.
All right, any other questions? Move a motion.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the Community Preservation Committee F Y twenty-fourteen appropriation into the Monday, May sixth, special town meeting warrant, subject to approval as to formed by Town Council.
Move in second, is it all of us in favor?
Aye.
Is it special? Is that special?
It's annual.
Did I say special?
Did you say special?
Oh, okay, yeah, it's annual, yeah.
Very good. Next one is Board of Water Commissioners, the F Y twenty-fourteen Water Enterprise Fund, and you have the specifics of their proposal, which are printed on Article five, two point three million dollars, all funded by Water.
Two point, two point three, no?
Any presentation?
No. They're not here for the presentation for this.
Okay.
Any, any questions or comments from the Board?
Again, just putting it on the warrant, so.
Yeah.
All right. Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the article for the Board of Water Commissioners Enterprise Fund Betterment for the Monday, May sixth, annual town meeting, subject to approval as to formed by Town Council.
Second. Move in second, is it all of us in favor?
Aye.
Is that?
Very good. Next one is a request in the Board of Health, and I see Gino and Peter back, back there. Board of Health has requested an article for Community Septic System Repair Loan Program, and this is a program that's operated by a D E P. The town meeting would vote to authorize borrowing, you apply into the program, and I think it's right now a zero percent loan program.
Zero.
Yeah, you get zero percent. And, and many communities make use of that fund to be able to then turn around and, and extend loans for repair of failed septic systems to local property owners. And the, the one question that Town Council had in reviewing the article, and I had talked to Jim Correty about it as well, that I know your request was, was for three hundred thousand in borrowing, if two hundred thousand dollars is the limit under the program. in borrowing, if two hundred thousand dollars is the limit under the program for DEP?
They won't let the talent for following years, so you don't have to go to the town meeting.
Okay.
What it is, two hundred thousand, Keith, the first year.
Yeah.
And a hundred thousand for the second. It's a two-year program.
Okay, two years, so we can.
And basically, they recommend that the town, when they go to treat this like a bond, they go for the three hundred thousand. So then the second year, if you have used up all your two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Then the three hundred thousand will be, the other hundred thousand, I should say, will be available to implement.
So it's like two, it's two trips to the program, though, if it's in two hundred thousand dollar chunks. Town Council's question was only whether we were going to use some funding source other than the program, and the answer's no, that we intend to use the program as the entire funding source, that, rather than using our own money.
Right. See, the key, key to this is that the state gives you, not gives, but lots of money. You can go in and get what you need for zero percent. And what the town does can go to the, when the applicant that has a failed system, and we, we have to draw up a program, how we deal with that. When they get their loan, then they can pay back whatever we agree to adopt, anywhere from two to five percent. And of course, Barney, unfortunately, will be involved in here, will form a little more work on it. And that, that will pay supposedly for the work that Barney does.
He was straight across.
Of the departments.
Yeah, Barney usually charges about two percent.
I don't know what the going rate is now, we'll have to work it out.
Okay, so three hundred thousand. We'll, we'll have the article read three hundred thousand, as they requested. Thank you.
Any questions?
How's this relate to the documents that we have in our package, the Community Septic Management Program? Is that, are they connected?
Yes, that's, that's basically what it is, Alex. What, what happens is, is, originally, we had a very similar program, Littleton, I see Bob Zimmerman's here, it probably was in Bob's timeframe. Very much like this one's coming up before that, there was a grant that, the previous one before that. And basically, what it was set up to do was to help people that couldn't afford to get their system done, a failed system. It gives them a little bit lower interest rate, then they pay it back on their tax bill over the course of twenty years. So it has a lot of benefits to that type of person. The previous ones, part of the, what the Board of Health has to do is develop a program of where they want to target. I think the previous one targeted the Long Lake area, so it kind of tied in with clean water and things of that nature. So it wasn't, it wasn't something that anybody could come and get, get that particular loan. It was, before, it was tied in with water resource, or clean water, or stuff like that, and that's where the Board of Health kind of acts as the loan officer, if you will, and determines, you know, who should get it and who shouldn't.
As I was reading through this today over lunch, I caught a couple of things that, that, I don't know, just, we were, sure, these questions are going to be asked by somebody at some point, but it has two components. It has a, a septic management program and a community inspection plan. And as I read this, it sounds like the town would be creating an inspection plan that will have an enforcement, armed staffing, administrative structure, and they would administer the repair of systems and administer the loan repayment. Is that all part and parcel to the whole thing?
To be truthful with you, we just got some of that information. This was presented to us a couple of months ago, and a lot of the real detailed stuff was not in there, so we had a general overview of what the program was. In fact, as I think Gino has some handouts here, they get a little bit more definitive, maybe the same thing, but I think it's one of the other of those two programs that the Board of Health has to implement or include some of those particular things. So I think probably, depending on whether the town goes for this, it'll be, and we'll probably get input from the town, I'm sure, on the town meeting floor of how we will present our program, what we'll do with the program. I hope that, I probably get the answer.
It almost looks like the state's sort of requiring that you do these things so that you can get the bottom money.
Yes, that's true. So we have to have a plan.
I was just curious about the enforcement plan and whether we're taking on new responsibilities to go out and inspect and forth and find the failed systems and then enforce on failed systems and stuff like that. That's very different than the previous plan.
We'll, we'll have answers.
Yeah. You'll have answers for all that kind of stuff on the town meeting floor?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure. We'll have a, probably a presentation too with, you know, to.
Isn't that why we contract with the show of Board of Health? It sounds like everything that did administer right there.
Yeah, that's the, primarily, the same.
What they just said?
Type of thing. Uh, Bob Zimmerman was, I think they're, they're involved.
Yeah, we're to perhaps.
Sorry.
That was a long time ago.
People are paying the things, right, Bob?
Okay. All right, well, we're just voting to insert the article here, so if there aren't any other questions, let's.
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to insert the article from the Board of Health for the Community Septic Loan Program for the, onto the warrant for the Monday, May sixth, annual town meeting, subject to approval as to, as to form by Town Council.
Second. Move in second, and all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Got it.
Thank you, gents.
All right. Littleton Common Sewer Feasibility Study Preliminary Design.
Okay. Borrowing article that's requested, the Chair, Megan Ford, is here, along with her entourage.
Well, I would like to ask that Mike Domenica do a quick presentation about what we would like to have inserted, if that's okay with you, Mr. Domenico?
Yeah, if it's quick, sure.
Okay.
With a little help.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions as well.
Good evening. I'm Mike Domenica.
I guess it's not the PowerPoint.
Is this?
Expecting PowerPoint now.
No, I don't have a PowerPoint.
Okay.
I don't have a PowerPoint.
We can shine a light at him.
Put you on the spot.
I can stand under the light here, if you like. I'm Mike Domenica with Water Resources Associates, assisting the town with the evaluation of the statements of qualification in the short term, but also in the longer term, the feasibility of this smart sewer ring proposal put out by NSU Systems about a year ago. The proposal tonight is to put, at town meeting, a warrant article to fund preliminary design, not full design, but preliminary design of the system as proposed by the NUS report, but also to be modified based on the early parts of the study in the preliminary design, so that the recommendations made in the NUS study a year ago would be tested and modified somewhat based on more recent and updated information that comes at the beginning of the preliminary design. So, in short, that's what this warrant article would put forward.
Basically, for the past two and a half years, the feasibility study committee has been meeting, and we've been looking at this project from about thirty thousand feet. We want to zoom in now, and we want to take a closer look, and we are planning to do a public presentation on April twenty-third, as well as at town meeting, and we want to present everything that we have learned as a committee, as a feasibility committee, over the last two and a half years to the public, so the voters can make a choice as to whether or not they want to move forward at this point. So we would like to insert that into the warrant if possible, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may also, as, as a member of the committee from the start on this also, the committee has always said from the beginning that there will be checkpoints where we come to the town and we say, you know, we need to, we need to look at this more closely, and, you know, yes or no, then we go to another one, yes or no. And this is probably, I guess, you know, the second time we've come, and this is not the last time. This is just to come in and go to the next step of the feasibility. We, the NSU reports have said that this is feasible. There's a lot of different variables in there, and this is to go in there and decide those variables. So while the term may be misleading to say preliminary design report, it makes it sound like we're jumping off the, we're, we're jumping off from the starting point and saying, let's go with the preliminary, which automatically is the final design. That's just not the case, where right now, it's going to be a preliminary design, where we're going to really find out what's this, is this feasible, you know, whether the conditions that it is feasible, and, you know, what, and it will also lay out some sort of preliminary, it will lay out preliminary design. So it's really just the next step, which there will be a checkpoint again after this to see if we go to the next step.
So it's not a funding step?
No, by no means.
Any other discussion, board members?
I'd like to hear a little bit more about the funding mechanism.
Funding mechanism for?
For the five hundred thousand, or thereabouts?
Well, we don't have the, the number quite yet because we're about to review some of the RFQs, the bills, starting tomorrow, we're forming our subcommittee, so we're going to be reviewing that. We're going to be looking to insert that final number before the deadline so that it will be on the warrant, and I think that we'll probably have a lot more information about the funding and everything else.
I know the intention is to qualify for the, for the state's, for the SRF program, the State Revolving Fund for wastewater projects.
Right. But, I mean, the, the funding mechanism right now, this is a borrowing article. This is a proposed borrowing article. We haven't inserted the, the number yet. The committee has not come up with that.
So this is, this is above and beyond the lending capacity?
I'm not sure how it falls in. That's a question for Bonnie, but this is borrowing, and, you know, it takes the two-thirds, and the funding will be, is if, if, after we do this portion, the preliminary design report, we find out that, yes, this is feasible, then that money will actually be paid by a, the sewer enterprise fund, or something, in effect, something similar to what Electric and Water does. And, you know, it is, it does come down to, if we get to this point and we say it's not feasible, then the borrowing stays in under the town, and I don't know exactly where that goes. That's, that's for town account.
From the general fund. Yes. We have to work it into our debt service.
If they're ultimately sewer users, it's a cost that can get passed on to them through betterments and recharges and whatever. If there aren't, then it gets paid by the general fund, when the, when the debt service comes.
You talked about the SRS, and the SRS would lock us in, is that right?
Mr. Chairman, could I have Mr. Zimmerman answer this question as well?
Under the State Revolving Fund is a block grant that comes from the federal government to the state every year for water and sewer specifically. And I think the state of Massachusetts spends something like three hundred million dollars a year on water and sewer projects throughout the state. There's a long list of rules and regs as to what qualifies for that two percent money. But the planning, this planning stage, the actual preliminary design, can be folded into, if, at the next step, as Ted indicated, when it comes to town vote, if it's feasible, the cost is accepted by the town, and the town votes to go ahead with the actual construction, then whatever planning money has been spent can be folded into that entire SRF loan and paid back by the downtown businesses that are actually.
Right.
Exactly.
So at this point, it's mere, we have to raise and appropriate in addition, above and beyond the levy limit. Is that correct?
Not above and beyond, within the levy.
No, it's borrowing, and it would be within the levy limit. There's no override, there's no debt exclusion.
For the first few years, we would anticipate that this would be a ban, a temporary borrowing. So, for example, for fiscal fourteen, we would just need to appropriate enough for the interest payment only, which would be a relatively small payment in comparison to the budget. But when we start financing that permanently, that's when the principal payments would kick in, and the debt service really needs to be settled out.
So that, this is factored in, and this amount is factored into, under the levy limit and?
I do have an allowance.
Considered with the deficit as well?
Yes, yes. I do have an allowance in there for short-term debt placed on it, and this is incorporated as part of that. Again, it's temporary interest, interest only, not principal.
What's that number?
Won't know until the, until we come up with our number for the.
We don't have a number, yeah. We, we don't have the number yet, but we will by the deadline for the warrant.
Well, I'm just assuming it's a worst-case scenario of five hundred thousand.
Well, that's your prerogative. I don't know, what's that based on?
On what we heard from the committee last time.
Based on the questions, and on going back and forth, and numbers have been tossed around, but, I mean, we've got to have some idea.
Find out.
Yeah, well, there's been nothing given by the sewer committee, so I'm not, yeah.
That number did not come from, from our committee, because we don't have that number yet, but we will find out soon.
Again, tonight, we're just going to put it, insert the article.
I'm totally, you know, trying to get a better picture on where this fits in the financials that we've been planning for and working towards, and the deficit we're trying to close, and whether it fits with everything that we've been planning. And what I'm hearing, which is a little bit of a surprise to me, is that we've been planning this in our budget discussions all along, so this is factored in. I was assuming it was going to be raise and appropriate, and people were going to, you know, have to come up with additional money beyond the two and a half in order to do it.
So this is good news, that it's not going to be raise and appropriate and beyond the two and a half, is what you're saying?
Well, yes, but we're still having a lot of trouble.
Well, I mean, we've seen this, we've seen this project, we've seen this project on the horizon for months now, and we're paying attention to what each of our committees is working on, so it doesn't, it did not come as news that they were bringing forward this article. Didn't come as news to, to, you know, the financial planning we were doing. We still don't know what the number is, the final, but within parameters, and I don't think that, you know, I don't think half a million in borrowing is out of, I mean, I'll put my name on that number, and, and no one else will, but I think that's a reasonable number for us to figure for short-term budget planning.
When we do the short-term debt account, what we might need to borrow for the year, we need to appropriate money to pay for interest. So we look at the roadway plan, we look at any type of short-term borrowing that we might do within the town, and we appropriate money for short-term interest. And we knew that this was coming up, so we incorporated a sum for some interest payment, should it be needed.
So what was the factor you do?
I, I think, I think the amount that we looked at was twenty thousand. I don't have that here. It's just an interest payment on that, on some portion of the five hundred thousand that we may expend. So it was, it was an estimate, but we did incorporate it into the, the budget documents.
And does the finance committee weigh in on this yet?
No.
No, finance committee has not adopted a recommendation on this article, because we haven't, we haven't brought it to them yet.
No, didn't answer my question. I'm trying to reach a comfortable level with funding, but.
It did reach, it did answer your question, or it didn't?
It did.
Okay.
I'm ready for a motion, unless there's any other discussion. Damon, address for the.
Go in, dearie, two eleven Howard Avenue. I just wanted a little clarification. So if the end result is that we decide not to move forward with this, whatever that principal amount is, you know, people have said five hundred thousand, maybe it's less, that would be the town's debt?
Yes.
So we taxpayers would be paying that off?
If there, if there, yes, if there are no sewer users to pay for their share, then the only other entity that can pay the bill is the, is the taxpayer.
So that would go on our, our property tax bill for how many years? For twenty years, or for?
In five or ten years, and that's hopefully what we'll be able to work out, is once we come up with a number, we'll be able to take that number and figure out, okay, if we finance this for five years, or we finance for ten years, that will cost, that'll be this cost per taxpayer based on, you know, how we always do it, based on average cost of house. And, but that'll all, and then at that point, we'll also know whether it's going to be in the, within the levy limit, or whether it's going to be outside of levy limit.
And, and this is just for a preliminary design? It's not even the final design?
Correct.
That's right.
So just, just one clarification on that. I'm sorry, Megan.
No, that's, go ahead.
It's not like a debt exclusion, so your property tax is going to increase? This is coming out of the general fund that is a fund within the town's budget?
Yeah, but that's all our money.
I agree. It is your money. It is your money. But it's not, you said this is going to be added to our tax bill.
It won't be added to your tax bill like a debt exclusion.
It'll just be taken out of our money.
It's, it's, it's going to be part of the general fund of taxes that you paid to the town in your tax bill. Whereas you have a debt exclusion, okay, like the police station, that money is added to your tax bill above and beyond the two and a half percent because it's a debt exclusion. It's not a prop two and a half override.
But the proposal is we spend this large sum and then maybe we don't even do a sewer system in the end and then we could have used that money for something that we definitely do need.
And that's why we're going to town meeting. But your comment in regards to this will be added to our tax bill is incorrect. Okay, that's, that's the point that I wanted to make.
A fine point, but.
No, it takes up a portion of the taxes that the county pays. Yes.
Something else is not there.
Can I just add that that, what you're saying is the worst-case scenario? And we're planning to present the whole scenario at our public presentation on April 23rd, the best case and the worst case. We want the public to be informed of everything that we've learned over the two past two and a half years as a feasibility study so that you can really make an educated vote at town meeting, so.
I see a few hands up, you had my hand up. Damon, address for the record.
Yes, Allison Field Juma, I'm from Oars, the watershed organization for the subway asset in Concord Rivers and Littleton, the eastern half of Littleton is in that watershed. We've worked a lot with towns in our watershed on sewer and wastewater management. And a lot of them do encounter tremendous problems in trying to dispose properly of wastewater. And they use a lot of energy to try to do that. And it is really great to see Littleton, I just want to very quickly just say, it's great to see Littleton looking at this approach. The final decision will be up to the town and will be based on a lot of careful study. But it's the sort of thing that I think is really looking forward. Our water resources are critical. Drinking water is going to be more and more of an issue in the future. Keeping water in our streams and lakes that's clean. And this kind of approach that manages growth in a very thoughtful way and uses energy in a very thoughtful way holds a lot of promise. And so I just think it's great that the town is, is looking at this and will look at it carefully and we, we really support that process.
Mr. Simone.
Thank you, Chris Simone, Story Road. Just a question about the delta between cost and scope of preliminary versus full design and when the full design decision point would occur.
We would, as Ted just mentioned, we would be doing checkpoints with the town. If we have to call a special town meeting, we certainly would. So if, let's say the next step is a preliminary design report, which allows us to zoom from about 30,000 feet to about 1,000 feet, then that's going to show us a different level of feasibility. If at that point it says, no, it's not feasible, we can't get these business owners, these users to pay for it, then we would then probably say, okay, it's not feasible. And then if we get commitment from the business owners at that point and it looks like it could be feasible, we do another checkpoint, go to another town meeting vote before we move forward.
Again, Chris Simone, Story Road. That's not an answer. I mean, cost and scope, delta between preliminary and final, 30,000 to 1,000.
We're not there yet. I'll tell you, right after, right after the preliminary design report, we'll have the answer for you.
Could I, could I like to know?
Let me, can I, I've spent some time on this. If I could draw a picture, I think it'd be helpful.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Worth a thousand words. If you take a, a project like this or any public works, water wastewater project, it would look like this in terms of the cost. Say that's the total cost of the project to get it planned, designed, permitted and built. The first phase is typically called conceptual study. And that can be anywhere from two to 5% of the total project cost. And just to clear up some terminology, what you've done to date with the NSU study is really a conceptual study. It breaks the ice and looks at the project to see if this is something that could be feasible, is being done in other parts of the country, has been done in other places and could work for Littleton. And the study says, yes, it is, so go to the next step. The next step would be a preliminary design report. That preliminary design report is really more of a feasibility study. It takes the conceptual study and makes specific a lot of the particular uncertainties regarding the data. So it's called preliminary design, but it's really a feasibility, full feasibility study. In order to do that full feasibility study, you need to do some level of design to figure out what you're looking at. So the preliminary design is often put as a tag on that. That's about, probably about 5 to 7% of the total project. Then you get the design phase. If it proves to be feasible, all the numbers line up, finance lines up, everything else. Then you go to full design. Full design permitting, land acquisition, et cetera, could be about 15% of the project, something like that. After design, you get construction. And that's the rest of the project, which would be, what do you got, 5, 10?
75-ish.
75%. That can be somewhere between 75 and 80%, depending upon the type of project. On this kind of project, you're looking at more upfront types of study because it is innovative. There are some technologies here that are being developed, are being used in other places. There is a component of innovation to this. It's not totally innovative, though. A lot of these things are being used around the country. An aerobic digestion, energy conversion, et cetera, are getting to be commonplace. As a matter of fact, just about every community doing wastewater planning is looking at these things now. So, so the total of this is 100%. And what this phase is doing, you've done this. What this is doing, and we talked about this in the committee, is breaking the preliminary design or feasibility study into two phases. So that there's a step one, which doesn't spend the whole X hundred thousand, but spends a certain amount to say, okay, let's take a phase one of this portion. So whatever this number that you're putting in the warrant article eventually, whatever it is, take about 25% of that and let's look at this in more detail, pull down some of the variables and see if it still looks like it will fly. If it does, then you go to the rest of the feasibility study. So whatever number's in the warrant article, it'll be about 25% of that for the first phase of that feasibility study and then the rest subsequently. Is that Representative Warren, what you talked about?
Very nice, very nice picture. Given the timeline, where do we, when we get down to the base, when are we going to be in the issue approximately?
Well, this will take, this whole thing, if you go the whole thing, could take a year to a year and a half. Then you have administrative, legal, town meeting type stuff to go to design. That design could take a year. So you're probably talking about two to three years before you get to breaking ground.
Before the ground breaks?
Yeah.
Then a year of construction?
Probably, that's a good estimate. It would be nine months to a year and a half.
And we're on a typically betterment start. With the collection of betterment, you know, the start.
Six, six months before you begin construction, you can do a pre, pre-construction betterment, which would be the first time that revenue would come in.
Couple of years, something like that.
Couple of years from now before you see user-generated fees.
Thank you, next one. Okay.
April 23rd presentation.
Yeah, we got a presentation on April 23rd. Any other questions, comments? I'll look for, oh, you got one more.
Jenna Brown, City 142 Harvard Road. I just have a quick question. I know that this $500,000 is this number that's been bounced around. Is that the double question mark number that we're looking at in your pyramid up here?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that, we're looking at potentially a cost of $20 million for the sewer system based on $500,000 is the number?
No, we don't know the number yet.
$500,000 doesn't exist.
The report said 23 million.
We, we don't have the numbers yet because the RFQ subcommittee hasn't even met to review the RFQs until tomorrow. And then we're going to study, we're going to get that number for the town, hopefully by April 23rd and definitely by the deadline of the warrant.
And can I ask, so theoretically, the 98 businesses in town are going to split the number, the magic big number in the end, this 20 or 23 million dollars is what the study says?
Well, I think that that would be, that, that we're not looking at anyone else to be purchasing this or paying for it. The, the users of the system will be the people that are paying for it.
And I heard some mention of the anaerobic digester, which means that there'll be trucks coming into Littleton to pay a fee?
No, I don't think that, that, that part of it is, well, Ted, do you want to talk about that?
Well, there's just, I don't want to get into it too much. There's going to be a presentation, but really, there's all these moving parts right now. There's anaerobic digestion, there's water reclamation, there's waste generation, waste of energy. These are all things that are in there. Some of them are only feasible when you get up to, you know, a certain size of plant. But the, you know, the other thing is you start small. So we don't run into problems like we ran into in Acton. So you can start by building a smaller plant and adding on to it.
The anaerobic digester is a part of this that, I'm not sure, I don't know if the submittals of the RFQ have even incorporated that or not. And if they decide to, that, that'll be part of what is going to be presented when we are making the vote at town meeting.
Can I just respond? It's sort of a misnomer to go directly to the end, pull the total cost of a quarter of a million gallon a day system out and say 100 property owners downtown are going to spend, are going to pay off 23 million. That's not the, the way the concept was designed. Think in terms of 30,000 gallons more a day than all of those properties currently generate. And that's what phase one, the phase one design, which is $5 million, I believe, between five and seven million dollars over 20 years. So if nothing changes downtown and those properties stay exactly as they are as we know them, then that's the total cost of the system. However, if over the course of 20 or 30 years, whatever it happens to be, property owners in the common district and the industrial district downtown elect to create more dense uses, then what they do is they pay an additional betterment fee to buy room in the wastewater treatment plant to have the additional wastewater treatment available for them to grow. The whole system, the whole 23 million at the end, the number you pull out at the end, is based on those payments as people expand. So it's sort of on-time delivery of treatment capacity as the treatment capacity is necessary. If however, that doesn't happen, we run into another 2008 bubble and nobody grows, then the town is not on the hook for 23 million dollars. The whole idea is to cap risk to those property owners and to the town at the lowest possible number that allows them to actually pay for a treatment there. Okay, so it's done on the backs of growth over time. And if the growth doesn't happen, then the capital investment is not made and the town is not responsible for it. Okay?
Thank you.
April 23rd, right?
Yeah, I, just one last word is that I've spent a lot of time on this committee for the last two and a half years as a volunteer. And the last thing I want is for people to be stuck on the worst-case scenario. I want everyone to see the entire picture and get educated to make, an educated vote, so. Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's.
You got a quick comment, Chris?
Great, but just on, on this point, this point is really only in the report that's been referenced. People can find it at no sewer dot com, no store dot com.
Come on, Chris, come on.
It's appendix zero, page 166. Let the town have the facts, that's all we're doing, that's what you're doing, it's a service.
Chris, that's fine. If you want, if you want the facts, if you want your questions answered, come to the committee. We have been doing this for two and a half years.
It's appendix O, page 166.
Excuse me, Mr. Simone.
You're suggesting that I'm making it up. It's inappropriate. Selectmen, do that.
If you want the facts, I'll try to finish this time. If you want the facts, if you want all your questions answered, please come to our information system, come to our meeting, please. We've invited everybody, we have been direct invitations to people to come to the meeting and present us with questions. We've received approximately, we received a sheet of 20 questions where we thoughtfully put our answers together and we responded to every one of those. We have additional list of frequently asked questions that are available for people and, you know.
Were they referenced on the town website, Mr. Simmons?
Yeah, they'll get through the town website. There is a Littleton communities, yeah, we have another website that we've linked from there. But, you know, all we want is people informed to make an educated vote and, you know. Yeah, get on the agenda and.
I do have one question. As we consider this, and we've considered a lot of things and we've been a lot of scrutiny in all of these, and frankly, I haven't decided where I stand on it. But I'm looking at the financial piece of it and I'm saying if some other committee, group, board came in and gave us this information, would we want to put a town meeting article on board? And that's, that's what I'm running with. Is there enough information here to say, okay, it's consistent with our goals, it's consistent with the funding, it's consistent with all the things that we've been, you know, the standards we've held and all the articles that we're putting on town meeting warrant? And that's, that's the question I don't have an answer to for myself yet.
I'd like to give you my answer. There are articles on here that have, that I may or may not, that some of these that I disagree with. I actually made motions on some of them to have them put on the warrant. Because what I say is put this in front of town meeting. It's not for us to be the gatekeeper on items such as this and say, no, town, you cannot vote on this. There's only one way to go on this. Put it to town meeting floor and let them vote on it. So that's how I answer your question.
But that hasn't been the stance we've taken on every matter. We've told people, they're not ready, come back later. We've held off, last week we held off one request.
So if you, if you don't want to put on the warrant, if you want to be the gatekeeper and not let this go to town meeting, then vote against putting it on town meeting.
We are all the gatekeepers. We are the ones that are supposed to review this and decide whether to put it on the warrant. I ask the simple question, does it meet the standard that we've held for everybody else?
Okay.
I'm not asking for a fight here.
No, I'm not either. I'm saying if I'm the gatekeeper, which you just told me I am, that I'm ready to open up the gates and let the town decide this and not close the gates and not put it to town meeting.
Then all I can say is, is I want us to keep the gates equal for everybody.
Town meeting, putting in front of town is the only way to do that. It is open and honest government and it's transparent.
And I'm just telling all of you, that's what I'm wrestling. I'm not wrestling with the issue of sewer. I'm wrestling with the issue of, are we ready to make this move?
And you're hearing from a commission, a committee that we appointed two and a half years ago that the chair has said previously tonight, they're ready. They're missing one piece and that's the, the final number. And we have put articles on the town, on the warrant based on, okay, we know what it is, we're waiting for the final number. We've done it with light, we've done it with water, we've done it with, done it with everybody. So it's.
Well, I think the other thing is too, we're, we're not voting to approve, we're just voting to assert. So, you know, we still take another vote, whether we approve the article, support the article. We'll do that.
The problem with, is are we, is this getting the same due diligence as everybody else who comes to us and presents to us with, we're still by that presentation at concept phase?
That's because that's all we're putting on the warrant, is a concept phase. And as, as two selectmen have stated, that we, they feel that this is treated the same way other articles have been treated. I've told you how I deal with it. I don't know what, if Joe wants to speak up, but this is, this is, just to put stuff on the, on the warrant.
They do do it, there's a lot of work that the committee has gone to. I have said to have them make a presentation and open up to town meeting. That's what this is all about. This is, I mean, you've been in committees, it's like the town government study committee. I spent two years on. That's what this is all about, this is, I mean, you've been in committees, it's like, the Town Government Study Committee, I mean, I spent two years on that type of thing. I'd hate to see, think that after all that time I put in, in that committee, that the board of selectmen, they don't say, you know something? We're not gonna.
A committee that we've formed.
Very important point.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we shouldn't be making that decision here. It's a big enough decision for the town, let the, let the voters decide. They have the final say.
Well, I couldn't agree more that the voters need to decide, so why let's move on.
Yeah, let's move on. The board of selectmen vote to insert the following articles, article onto warrants for the Monday, May sixth, twenty-twelve, uh, twenty-thirteen annual town meeting. Article fifteen, borrowing for Littleton Carmen Sewer, Carmen Smart Sewering preliminary design. Subject to approval as to form by town council.
Got a second?
Second.
Move and second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, all right. All right, we got the, the rest of the articles that we're gonna need to kind of inch our way through here. Hopefully we get to this point.
There's only two other.
Thank you, Mr. Zinnam.
Thank you, folks, committing.
Thank you, Megan.
There's, there's only two other articles, so, one is, uh, is for Community Preservation Fund Local Appropriation, which, uh, the article as proposed does not attach a dollar amount to it, but it, it does follow up the discussion that Bonnie presented to us last week about a possible funding mechanism for the, for the Community Preservation Fund. If we decide between now and town meeting, we wanna put money in the fund, say, as a means of having the cash we need to purchase the congregational church property.
Just, just for point of order, this is article eleven.
Yes, yes, that this article would allow you to, to have a motion to move funds into the Community Preservation Fund, so that was one. The other was a drainage easement on Harvard Road, the plan is being repaired, but in fact, next Monday night, you're gonna award the construction contract for, for Harvard Road. The engineers' estimate is two point one million, the low, the low bid's coming in at one point six million. Uh, but there is a, Jim Clyde says there is a drainage easement that we need to do that project, the engineers are working on that, and so we even will insert that article on as well. So those are the remaining two.
Sure, go ahead.
Is that, where, where the, where on Harvard Road?
I don't know, I don't, I don't have a plan.
Just for the sake of separating it out, I just wanted to say.
Yep, that's fine, sure.
Gee, she didn't realize it's a funny house.
Yeah, within two hundred feet.
Your basement's gonna catch basically.
Well, it's on my road, we know that.
Right, right.
When it ends out, step out.
So we're not gonna insert?
We're not gonna.
I just don't wanna discuss the drainage.
All right, so, um, so just question, this article will be for the CPC funding? That'll be taking money from the capital, the, and making a contribution to CPC?
What it will do is take sixty-eight thousand from the accumulated cell power revenues, and two hundred thousand from the reduced debt service payment that we recognized this fiscal year from the refunding.
Right, okay, so it's basically just cash out here.
Zero impact on our capital?
All right.
No, yeah.
No impact.
We had already done the capital plan, refunding.
And that's not taking anything that was requested from capital that puts us in a position where we can't order? Any other questions? Or look for a motion?
So, back to you, Harvard Road, did you say you wanna insert it? Or not, uninsert it?
He wants his separate items.
Oh, okay.
So CPC, what do we have? So we have CPC.
We have article eleven on the CPA funds, and article twenty-seven on Harvard.
Okay, so it's only two, okay.
I'll look for a motion, article eleven.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert article eleven, uh, Community Preservation Local Fund Appropriation, onto the warrants for Monday, May sixth, twenty thirteen, annual town meeting, subject to approval as to form by town council.
Second.
Move and second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert the article onto the warrant for the Harvard Road Drainage Easement for the, article twenty-seven for the Monday, May sixth, twenty thirteen, annual town meeting, subject to approval as to form by town council.
Second. Move and second, are all those in favor?
Aye.
And can the record please note that I am staying from that?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we got through that project, thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, anyways. Okay, Congregational Church Meadow Property.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'm gonna accuse myself of this, I have a letter that's on file with the town clerk and the board of selectmen's office, simply for the reason, when it was announced last week, that both the town was looking at it and the developers looking at it, our real estate team had a phone call the very next day after seeing it on TV saying, if it, if things don't go with the church, we would be interested, which makes it a conflict of interest for me, so I have to drop out of it.
Sure.
Thank you, selectmen.
Okay. How you had a time at the last meeting and?
Yeah, we, at, at the, at the board's last meeting, you inserted an article onto the warrant, uh, in pursuit of acquiring the property at, uh, on, on Great Road, uh, which the.
That has nothing to do with this presentation coming up, though.
Sure it does.
I mean, if, if the, if the town buys the property, it's town property. Is that, is that why?
Let me, let me, let me start over again. Last week, you voted to, um, insert an article that requires, that, that would allow for the property to be acquired by the town, um, in Fee Simple. And one of the, and in subsequent conversations, um, with the Trust for Public Land, with the, with other, with other groups, and there's, there was a presentation made to, to a meeting that I got to sit in on last Wednesday, and we've invited all those folks here today. One of the topics that came up was that, under some scenarios, the town's interest might end up being less than Fee Simple. And so we may wanna think about having an article that would allow Fee Simple for a lesser interest. And, and in fact, town council has, has redrafted the article along those lines. For, for really, a, a couple of, a couple of possible scenarios. One is that, uh, the, the Congregational Church itself invited us to a meeting which took place last Thursday, and it's, is more in here, there's more, uh, with, with another potential owner of the property, and.
Potential buyer?
A potential, uh, yeah, potential buyer of the property. And so there is a, there's a discussion, uh, going on, exploring, uh, some other alternatives, which, which could include, uh, some other buyer purchasing the Fee Simple, and the town purchasing an interest in the property, development, that sort of thing. So, so at one level, there, there's the need to clarify that, uh, in, 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 um, pursuing the Congregational Church property, that there are possible scenarios where we might end up purchasing the land outright. And there are other scenarios where we might end up purchasing an interest in the land. And, and that could be in a deal that just involves the town and the church and their other suitor. So, uh, so that's one scenario. But another scenario where the, the idea of less than fee interest could come into play is, uh, is what we're gonna hear about in a, in a presentation from the Trust for Public Land, and Darcy Schofield is here. Thank you for coming back, and thank you, others, for being here.
Is this presentation focused on this particular piece of land, or is it more global?
It's, uh, the, the presentation has to do with, um, other properties on two A, in addition to this particular property. In fact.
Has this been vetted through the Ag Commission at all? Has this been presented for the Ag?
The Ag Commission hasn't met since the issue came up on, on Monday. The next meeting of the Ag Commission, I think, is April second.
April third.
April third, and the Chair of the Ag Commission and I received this briefing on Wednesday. The warrant closes this, this Friday. It seemed an opportune time to have a discussion about, um, about the opportunity that would be presented if the town.
So, so we've already inserted the article, we voted to insert the article.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't this be vetted through the Agricultural Commission before it comes to us? Just to have their buy, I mean, this is, this is a bigger play than just the land that, that we're looking at here.
It's a, it's a, it's a very, it's a very big play.
Right.
Yeah.
So I would think that the Ag Commission would wanna understand this and be on board with this before, before we.
I would think that we all would be, would wanna be, and that, and that the role of all of the boards that could be potentially affected, starting with the board that I work for, uh, and that sets policy in this town, would, would want to be a conduit for, for receiving and disseminating information that we get about potential opportunities. This, it's your goal, it's your goal as a board of selectmen to preserve, to preserve agricultural land.
I just wanna make sure that we're not making the decisions here, turning it.
There's no decision that's, no, there's no decision, there's no, there's no votes being taken tonight. There's no policy decisions that the board is being asked to do. Rather, uh, since our meetings are televised, since people tend to come to our meetings more than other meetings, it seems to me to be a reasonable first stop on, on the lecture tour for the group to come and present to the board of selectmen and the other parties that are represented here today. If you don't wanna do that, that's fine, and we can shut it down, but if you.
My only concern is, for me, it's short of time, I had to leave here fifteen minutes as well. I know we ran over a lot of that stuff.
You know, this, this whole matter with the church property coming up, and, um, you know, and looking at agricultural preservation, I agree with you that when we look at agricultural preservation from a larger perspective, you know, we need to take certain steps to get there. But the dynamic of the church property coming up means that we have to move.
I don't disagree with that, I don't disagree with that, that's why we inserted the article last week.
If we are going to do this, all the justice it deserves, we have to be the leaders here in looking at the various alternatives, because one of our major obstacles is how is it gonna be funded? And so we're gonna listen to things that talk about alternatives, that talk about preservation, and they're all directly connected to our desire, that we've already expressed, to try to preserve in one fashion or another this church property. So I think, I think this is timely, and I think that at this point, we, you know, we can't, we, we can't afford the time to say, well, we're gonna go here, and then we're gonna go there, and then come back here, because you know what? Property's gonna be gone.
How come you're the only one who gets applause?
Well, how long will this, how long will this presentation?
I will keep it very brief for you, I promise to do that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I apologize, folks, but I, business calls, and I need, I do need to recuse myself at eight o'clock, so. Go ahead, why don't we, why don't we jump right into this?
Yeah, sure. Yep.
Should I stand up here, or?
Right there is fine.
Okay, so I'll get started. Uh, my name is Darcy Schofield, I'm a project manager with the Trust for Public Land.
I'm gonna be looking at this through a triangle.
Who is that in that picture, by the way?
Ben Mishway.
So, Darcy Schofield, Trust for Public Land, where, um, if you wanna give, change the slide. Um, I'll give it very brief, because I do understand your time is very tight, and I appreciate the opportunity to present today. It is clearly timely, um, and I just overall want to introduce my organization, why I'm here tonight, a little bit about how we work in partnership with municipalities to achieve conservation projects. And then again, very briefly, the potential Littleton Community Farm Conservation Project, which is a visit, vision of this community that we are here to help to enact. Um, I am happy to come to any subsequent meetings to keep you informed as this may or may not proceed to move forward, so I will keep it brief. That's the next slide. Uh, Trust for Public Land, uh, we conserve land for people, and I'll get to the next slide. This is how great we are, three point one million acres nationwide, forty-seven states, five thousand seven hundred eighty-nine projects, fourteen thousand five hundred acres in Massachusetts, we've been here in Massachusetts since nineteen eighty, and we've protected twenty farms totaling over two thousand acres through our Massachusetts Community Agriculture Program. And that's the Griggs Farm in Billerica. Next. Um, so how we work, the Trust for Public Land, we're a national conservation organization. We are very different from, um, land trusts such as Sudbury Valley Trustees, um, in that we actually don't hold land in the long term. We work with communities and our projects reflect their priorities, we facilitate the transactions. So how we do that is that we, um, when we are asked to work on a project, and I will describe in a moment how I got to be here, we will negotiate directly with landowners and enter into contract with them. Uh, we take on, by doing that, we gain site control of the land, we prevent any, um, other opportunities for that land to be sold for other purposes during the duration of our contract, we take on the risk of the transaction. We also perform all the due diligence associated with the transaction, title work, appraisals, environmental assessments, surveys if they're needed. We do this at our own expense, we do this as a service to our partners, so all of that due diligence material would be for your records. Um, and in addition, we put our own capital down to secure the site. And as I mentioned, there is no obligation to any of our partners, we take on the risk of the transaction. We don't however, provide the capital for the purchase price, but we structure our agreements to allow the time to amass multiple sources of funding for the purchase price, and again, we work in partnership with everyone to make that happen, applying for private grants, state municipal funding, sometimes federal if it's applicable, and private, other private buyers. Um, the Littleton Community Farm, I was approached by Chris Chisholm from the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources. She had mentioned that there are a variety of community advocates interested in protecting several properties on Great Road in Littleton, and that there was a vision for a Littleton Community Farm. She also thought that this might be a good project for the Trust for Public Land to assist this community, because we can take on multiple transactions and facilitate multiple dispositions all in one transaction by negotiating with the various landowners. We make it simple, we do the project management, we have our own in-house counsel, so we can really streamline this opportunity and provide a great service for Littleton. Other people that are obviously very evolved and interested, and these are only some of the partners that we are just starting, we literally just started this project a week ago, um, and so it's moving very quickly, and we are very much in the, the infant stages. But Littleton Community Farms, Sudbury Valley Trustees, New Entry Sustainable Farming, the Town of Littleton, and Department of Agricultural Resources. So, next slide. These are, uh, the, this is the proposed conservation project area, it includes the Church Meadows property, the Cooper land, and the Fletcher land. And, um, how this presentation relates to the Church Meadows property is, I had a very brief opportunity to meet with Warren last week, but, um, what our goal is, is to create a very large-scale farming area, preserve land with agriculture, leveraging a lesser amount of the Community Preservation Act funds. So by doing a bigger project, we're gonna be able to bring a variety of funding sources to the table and make a bigger, a more profound conservation opportunity for this town, for the region, for local food, and we'll be able to leverage more CPA funds by doing this. I did have the opportunity to speak with the Fletcher's attorney this afternoon, and I just spoke with the Cooper's attorney very briefly, replaying phone tag, but they are all both aware that we are interested in, um, doing a land deal to preserve the land for conservation and agriculture. Next slide. So generally, the project goals is to acquire one or more of the parcels on the Great Road. We wanna permanently protect that land from residential development by imposing an agricultural preservation restriction, and we wanna secure farmers to cultivate that land, and that can be in a collaboration with the, um, Littleton Community Farm, with farmers that are here in the town that are looking for more land, um, the potentially new entry. There's a variety of, of ways that we can do this, but our overall goal is to acquire the land, permanently protect it, and create a, a regional resource of local food and farming and education on Great Road in Littleton. Um, the Littleton Community Farm has a really incredible vision, and they could articulate it better, Amy is here, um, as well, so she's probably the best to describe that, but here. so she's probably the best to describe that. But here's just the overall project goals. Next slide. And as I mentioned, we're looking at a variety of funding sources to make that happen, which would include Department of Agricultural Resources, a portion of the, the APR would, they, excuse me, the town's CPA funds would be a match for the APR program, but the APR program puts in way more money than the CPA typically does. We're looking for farmers to acquire land to cultivate it. Perhaps an agricultural organization would acquire it and farm it. We are also exploring the opportunity to do for farmers to lease the land. We will be doing some private fundraising, I am sure, to make this project work. And then the Trust for Public Land, as I mentioned, we're taking on a lot, the majority of the hard costs of this project. We'll be doing the project management. We're kind of the one-stop shopping for your conservation needs, if you will. Next slide. So, I, again, I'm happy to come back at a time that is less tight. I know that I presented very quickly, and it's.
And I definitely would invite you back again to present in more detail.
Absolutely.
Personally impressed with time, and I wanted to hear more about it. Okay, so at this point, this is just an informal discussion.
It's, it's an effort to share this very new information with the board and with the public. We can certainly take this, this show on the road to the other committees. I think it would be important to, yeah, be important to touch bases with the Agricultural Commission and can.
I'd like to actually get the, the Chair of the Ag Commission's initial thoughts briefly.
I think the idea is fantastic to conserve saving that land. I mean, last we had discussed at the Agricultural Commission meeting, the Cooper property wasn't really available. So.
The Ag Committee as well.
I mean, we personally find it kind of awkward to be discussing the fate of somebody's land when it's not for sale. I know that the Agricultural Commission has had some issues with the New Entry Sustainable Farming Group. We have requested them to come back into a meeting at our April 3rd meeting to discuss and try to solve some of the issues that we found and had, and hopefully get some of the answers, some of the questions that we had answered, because I know that there was a lot of questions that they were unable to answer for us when they had showed up at a meeting at our, I think about a year ago.
Yeah, probably.
About a year ago. They were kind of new to, we were one of the first towns that they had approached. I know the town of Oxford had some similar issues. Littleton is very unique, so we have a lot of production agriculturists in this area, so, I mean, it'd be nice to save that land, but it'd be nice to see it in production agriculture and not just a wildlife habitat and small pot farming. But I would totally, you know, I think the Community Farm Group, I think that that's a fantastic idea, and I think we're going to discuss all of that at the AgCon meeting, and I'm sure we'll get in touch with you after we've had the chance to review it, and also learn more, because I had just found out about the meeting, the meetings and what's going on a week ago. So it's all new to everybody.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. So if you folks can work together, so at least get, you know, some input, you know, get buy-in from the Ag Commission.
Absolutely.
That would be great.
I think there was another point here, is that, you know, last week when we talked about this, we were grappling with funding, and the people that put together what we have before us tonight deserve some praise from us, because. We've been given a lot of opportunity here, because financing is very difficult, and this just puts another great option on the table for us to find a way to preserve this.
Yeah, the one point that I've been making with the other committees is we have enough community preservation funds on our own to buy one small piece of property, and then we're out of the business. We don't have the money. So if we can somehow make sure that we're accessing other potential funding sources to preserve, you know, huge amounts of land, then that's, you know, that's an important priority. So we'll be working closely with the town boards and committees, starting with AgCon, to see if there's something here that we can pull together.
And I think, you know, when we have more time, please come back, have a more in-depth discussion. Make sure we've got all the other boards that have actually seen your presentation, so we can have, you know, real good, meaningful discussion and go through it, with what you presented. You did a great job of that, through very quickly.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for, thanks for finding.
I'm not going to get through, I'm not, I'm not going to get through all these articles, because I need to leave in five minutes.
I was really struck, struck, I should say, by what was presented to us last week about how much food was going to lobes and fishes.
Yeah, I agree.
And what, what drove the point home for me, because I go to Devon's quite often, and I went by the site, and it was at a time when people were there getting their assistance, and how many cars were up and down the street on either side. And, and I got handed to the church for, for finding whoever had been doing that, and I hope that whatever we work out, we can continue that great work, because, you know, I suffer myself the need, and I'm just, I'm just ranting and raving because it's just.
You don't have to be here very late, you know?
Can I say something very quickly? My name is Brad Mitchell, 41 Harwood Avenue in Littleton. I'm also Director of Government Affairs for Mass Farm Bureau. I've been involved in Massachusetts agriculture for about 25 years. As a resident, as somebody involved in agriculture, I support this. But I've got to tell you, I've been in a lot of, involved in a lot of land acquisition projects to preserve agriculture, where they didn't have farmers at the table and managing and being part of that. And I've seen a lot of money spent end up with a lot of ag land and pocket brush. So I would encourage you very strongly, both as a resident and somebody involved in it, to work with the AgCon. If you don't have working farmers at the table helping you design and make this move forward, it's not going to work. There's a lot of well-intentioned people who don't know anything about agriculture who want to save land and preserve it and keep an ag. Unless you get somebody who knows the business of farming, you're going to fail. That's why AgCon started, so I would encourage you to give these folks the lead.
We've invited.
Amen.
Oh, sorry, Booney, Tarla, Lucy, Pierre, Megwena, the president of Littleton Community Farm. We have created, we have a board of directors, but we've also created an advisory committee, so we've sent letters to Jamie, who's wonderfully accepted our offer to join our advisory committee, and to Fran, and to Gary, and he comes back to Florida, and to Julie, WY the Camp, who owns Full Basket Farms, a small farm, and to Pam Campbell, who also is a small farmer and educator in town. And we're also working with, with Brittany Sidway, who's the farmer who brought Medway Community Farm up off the ground and running, because, you know, I have an economics degree. I don't know anything about farming, but we've already started to surround our people, ourselves with people who can be involved and to help us, so.
Excellent. Thanks.
All right, we want to add one more. Go ahead.
We are on a journey, all of us.
Yep.
And I am absolutely humbled by what has been placed before us. And in a way, I apologize for the church bringing this up and saying we have to sell our land. And, and perhaps, maybe a higher calling is setting us on this journey. We're ready to work, and we are ready to help in any way we can. And we're truly praying that we can work out a wonderful opportunity for Littleton, because the church has been in Littleton 143, 173 years. We want to be here another 173 years. Amen.
At this point, I'm going to have to step out. I need to get on the road. Mr. Nod. Mr. Nod stepped out, so let's see if I can get Mr. Nod.
Thanks, guys. I'm pretty done.
Okay, Conservation Commission. Heather, are you speaking on Conservation?
I'll just come up.
Folks, we have to get back to meeting? Excuse me, there's, there's still, there's still business. If you take conversation outside, it'd be great, or the hall. Thank you. No? Excuse me, excuse me, I'm, it's very distracting. We'd like to move on. Thank you. All right, Heather, give it a shot.
Okay, I don't know if it's first on your docket, is the, the increase in fees that the commission is proposing?
Please, one, two, three, you want to say one, that's three?
No, she's, she's talking about items.
Okay. Sixty first? All right. So now these fees, okay, so you have them here. They are, these are going to be fees for your permits and everything beyond what the town already collects for.
No, this is, yeah, beyond what the town collects, sorry, for DEP. These are more in line with what other surrounding towns currently have. Right now, we just charge a flat rate of $15 for all permits, which we just had the 15 Great Road. They paid $15 to put that whole subdivision in.
Well, wait, 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 in addition to?
In addition to, I think we collected from DEP, I think it was maybe 2,500?
Okay, so they paid.
In accordance with, if you look at what I've done research and what other towns do, with what they had done for a fee, just as an example, they had category threes and fours in there, so it would have been about $900. Other towns have an example of, of it starting at 1,500. So to charge an extra 600 compared to a town just next door that charges 15, whereas we have gone out on site, oh, this has been on, as far as, oh, in front of you as well, for several months, to pay a $15 fee for what the commission does for work is actually, this is just more in line with what the commission actually does. They go out on site for a single-family house, maybe once or twice, but for these larger-scale projects, these take two or three months, if not longer, to do, and they're going out on site every week, every two weeks, for months on end. So this is just more in line of to go into what work that the commission does, and getting us more up-to-date with other, other towns is doing as well.
All right, again, this is just to insert it on the, or the warrant.
No, this is not to go on the warrant.
This is to approve, okay.
To approve.
All right, so I guess you tried, you made two points. You said this is what other towns approve. This is what other towns would be in line with.
More than what other towns do.
To me, that doesn't, doesn't, you know, that doesn't come into play for how we should set fees. The second point where you set your fees is, you know, the amount of work that the commission does and the cost of the commission. So, I mean, have you done any calculations, say, how much it costs, and, you know, what, you know, to make the fees commensurate, or you're just.
If you were to pay the commission members that go out, that don't get paid, the Cisco site, I had two members going out every.
Two weeks.
Every two weeks, and that's been going on since last July. So every two weeks from last July, for at least an hour to walk the site a piece, how much was your time cost you an hour to go out and walk a site? These, it's, it's just.
Right, but, but, but they're not getting paid for that, right?
Exactly, they're not.
They're not, and they're not going to get paid under the new fee structure, or is that right?
No, they're not.
Okay.
But this is just to bring us, I guess, a more.
So where are our costs committed to, you know, to justify?
I'm sitting in the office reviewing these, these, these items as well. It's not just the commission. There's, there's my hours and time spent as well. Drafting letters, drafting, sending emails, keeping, monitoring reports on file, addressing answers to questions to residents, meeting minutes.
Okay, so that's, to me, that's all in the budget, and you're not working on an enterprise fund, so there's nothing.
Our Conservation Commission's budget is, is submitted by our fees.
It is? I thought every, I thought their fees go into general fund?
No, the wetland filing fees go in, by statute, go into a separate account.
Okay.
And of that, there's a portion of them that we use to fund the Conservation Commission's budget. I will reiterate Heather's statement that the Conservation Commission is one of the more labor-intensive boards, and that there's a lot of inspections and things that to go on and over to do their regular course of business. Their budget, basically, the town supports, I want to say about 18,000 of their budget. The rest is covered by maybe 6,000 in fees that are brought in. So there's still an $18,000 deficit, per se, to do business, to do these inspections and do the paperwork that's associated with the course of.
Right.
I mean, you know, these, these fees are miniscule in regards to, you know.
They will help offset some of that $18,000.
And you might work the administrative work that, that you have to go through.
Absolutely.
I know that the members volunteer to go out, but they still have to bring all that information back and have it all processed, so I, I don't have any problem with the fees.
Right. I'm looking at it as somebody who has clients, who've worked for many people with these things, and, you know, I, I see that the notice of intent for a single-family house is still only $25, that would be, but, you know, so I guess that's, that's where I'm looking at it. And I'm also looking at it as, you know, do the costs justify the fees?
Yeah, we didn't want to go, we didn't want to go too high. I had averages from 25 up to, up to 25 to 110 to 250. We thought something for a single-family house, someone just updated the statistics, to charge them 250 just seemed ridiculous. Right now, we're only doing 20, 15, to, to, up at $10, just, just seems enough to bring us more up-to-date. We haven't increased our fees since the bylaw went in 2004, I think, maybe, whereas, so, I mean, to update them, it's been nine, at least nine years.
And even with the increase, we're, we're on the low end still.
And again, but is it, how does, how is it in relation to the expenses? That's, that's where I'm, I don't, you know, you know, whatever, you know, we can go to other towns where they charge a lot less, or they don't, there's no fees, so I'm just.
We're charging less.
And they're $18,000 deficit, so, I mean, this isn't going to make up the 18 grand either. So, you know, they're, they're costing the Conservation.
Essentially, it's costing the town. If, if I don't, if the fees don't increase, and the budget keeps increasing, eventually, I'm going to be at a loss. I'm not going to bring in the fee to accept my, our budget.
But how is that different from Board of Health that takes in fees and has?
Board of Health has, and no offense to the Board of Health.
I made this question for Bonnie.
They have their agent that goes out and does these items, and he gets supplemented paid by the Board of Health. I'm essentially the commission's agent. I'm not rehired from an association.
We pay into that association.
Yeah, and you pay into that association, but.
If, if we vote in that's for this, then, then the fees go into effect?
Yes, that's correct. It's a two-step process. They adopt the fees, the Selectmen approve them, they, they no longer have to go to town meeting for approval.
And how long have they been at the major?
At least 2004, because that's when the bylaw first went into effect, and then they, and then they had changed, they changed since.
And I believe what we stated, we didn't want them to go into effect for 30 days from the time you voted, just so as people can get used to the idea. It wasn't be a surprise.
Not a motion.
I'd like to, you know.
To, to stay the fees for 30 days after I vote?
You don't have to. It was a suggestion. I mean, I've been warning people that they've been calling. It goes, "Oh, you want to get them before Monday? I want them just to be."
The chairman's been overruled, so.
Let's, I mean, you know, here's the, here's the other side of the coin. What if we're not charging enough? I mean, do we know, what do we know the cost of these things?
Um, we had, we had spoken to, just as a, as an offset, one of the engineers, and they come before us, ask her what she had thought. Larger-scale projects have multiple categories in there, so it's not just one. They had run in, in another town, she had run into an issue where their fee was like $15,000, because the town had extravagant fees, and ended up getting overruled. This is in line to the point where it's not enough that someone might question it and try to overrule us, and we get stuck with no fee, but it's enough that we at least are getting more supplemented to the work that we're actually doing.
And we're still on the low end.
We're still on the low end, exactly.
We're not trying to.
I know. It still didn't quite answer what, you know, where it is versus our cost. You know, another engineer can't tell you what your costs are, so that's what I was just trying to get at. But if the rest of the boards, I just think, you know, it should be.
I'll move that the Board of Selectmen vote pursuant to match General Law Chapter 40, subsection 22F, to approve the application filing fee structure adopted by the Conservation Commission, March 11, 2013.
All those in favor, so you can probably say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have the.
The other is, the, you have a request from the Conservation Commission to insert an article in the warrant to amend the Wetlands Protection Bylaw to authorize CONSCOM to adopt rules and regulations. And the discussion that we had, that we started last week was where you had expressed, or the members of the Selectmen had expressed some concern about whether it would be better to have specific changes that were put in the, in the bylaw at town meeting, rather than having a blanket approval of, to adopt rules and regulations for. whether it would be better to have specific changes that were put in the, in the bylaw at town meeting, rather than having a blanket approval of, to adopt rules and regulations for, as, as of yet unspecified matters. And the one topic that we were, that we talked about last week was, if, for example, you wanted to, uh, have a twenty-five-foot no-build buffer zone, that, rather, rather than get authority to adopt rules and regulations and then adopt it in that, why, would, what about the alternative of amending the bylaw itself to provide for a twenty-five-foot buffer zone? So, those were the, that's where our discussion left off.
I guess my concern, my concern has been, you know, um, and again, the townspeople would decide, decide, but, to give an authority to this commission, and I'm not saying that this commission is working perfectly and you're running on all cylinders, but future commissions-
Yeah.
That get over, can over-regulate.
Yeah.
And, and, and actually, um, be a detriment to anybody in town, that's where my concern is.
Um, so, the rules and regulations, really, the, the bylaw that we have and bylaws that other towns have in general, just specify more generally what the commission does. It just spells out what the Wetland Protection Act does. We protect wetlands, what the hearing date requirements are, items like that, and the only really insert that we have in ours is we require colored plans and, and enforcement, which the state by mandates. We can, we cannot collect more than three hundred dollars a day, so we have a little structure to go with that, which ninety percent of towns I've checked exactly have their bylaw states too, with the enforcement on there, just not the colored plans. The regu-, the rules and regulations just go into more detail to that, um, so, it just allows us to explain what it is we do and what we're requiring you to do in order to apply to us. Um, so say, we were filing a notice of intent, okay, we would like you to have one full-size sets of plans that are in color, uh, two other sets, seven smaller sizes to hand out to the commission members. It more or less just spells out to, for you, what it is we're looking for.
And that's awesome, and that's awesome, because, you know, if you can come up with your rules and regulations and, and come before town meeting and say, here are the rules and regulations that we would like to adopt-
They have to be done in a public meeting and posted, and posted extensively, just like every other county does.
Okay, so you're giving developed that-
We can develop that and take it, and take it input, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Develop that to a public hearing, let me ask you this question, if, if the twenty-five foot-
Yeah.
Would that be a rule and regulation?
That would be, and the thing is, we, it, it's, but it's not just gonna be, when, if it, if it does come about, and when it does, it's not just gonna be a twenty-five no-build. Um, to put that in a bylaw, it holds us to that, um, there's no exemptions in our bylaw, so if somebody comes to us with a septic system that's in failure, twenty feet from the, um, edge of wetland, sorry, you can't fix it, 'cause it's written in our bylaw, you're twenty-five no-build.
No, 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 you can, you can go in there and give a waiver.
You, you can give a waiver, but, but that is not listed in our bylaw, we do not have the waiver process listed in our bylaw. We can do that, but a stick of fur and butter could fight that on us, not saying that's gonna happen. These regulations will give us the opportunity to exempt certain people for repairs, for agricultural land, for emergency certificates, so if a bridge culvert goes out, like it did on one nineteen, we can say, it's an emergency, you're exempt from our regulations in our bylaw.
Can we get the gorgeous, go ahead, Joe.
I had to play to talk to the chairman yesterday about this, and I can understand some of the frustration that he told me about getting to a certain point and
We had had a-
the DEP comes back and tells him that you don't have regulations.
We had a denial that was overruled by us.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, I think, what we're all talking about in a certain way is that, is there a way of getting to the same spot that you need to get at
without just having it opened up, so like, like, what Jimmy pointed out, and Jim and I talked about yesterday, we don't know what's happening fifteen years from now. Is there a way that we can have it approved at a town meeting and do it that way, and get everything that you do want, that you do need?
We can try to, if it's, um, agreed upon by the, the selectmen, once we do draft these regulations, that they come before the selectmen and they review them for their approval.
I would feel more comfortable doing it that way, I mean, go through the public hearing process to develop your rules and regulations, to, 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 to have the waiver process, to be able to, um, develop something, then have it vetted through the public hearing process and all that.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, yeah, go ahead.
You know, I, I, I think we're, we might be making too much of this, and, you know, we, I'll use the personnel board. We, in our, um, bylaw, the personnel board, um, we had to make a lot of changes in a hurry because things became outdated, and we were terribly encumbered by the fact that it was bylaw, and that meant that every year we had to go-
Alex, that doesn't impact-
Will you please let me finish my point without interrupting me once tonight, please? So, the, it becomes cumbersome. Now, the language that was used in that particular case was, shall promulgate regulations not inconsistent with what is, is the, in the New York case, the Wetlands Protection Act.
Exactly. Yes, exactly.
And I think, you know, Board of Health has sand, similar language, others have similar language, I'm sure that, uh, Council on Aging has similar language where, where they have to have enough maneuverability, and the question is, how much do we give them, enough maneuverability on their feet, so that every slight change, we'd like two copies of a plan, so if we write it in the bylaw, and somebody says, best practice in the business is three copies, that means we've gotta go to town meeting and change two to three. We have to provide them enough latitude so that they can administer the Wetlands Protection Act, um, as they're supposed to do, and I think that's all they're asking for here. I don't think they're asking for sweeping changes, I think they're asking for something to make their job go along a little better.
I'm just asking if, if they, if they needed to go, if they could make this twenty-five-foot variance, um, a, a regulation, and they said yes. So, part of their rules and regulations, it's not this commission, I'm not concerned with this commission, it's future commissions, you know, um, if you can get a, uh, rules and regulations consistent with, you know, the DEP to help you out-
Oh, yes.
By all means, I mean, I guess, it's, you know, we, not to pick on the Board of Health, but in years past, the Board of Health had a bunch of regulations that really, really put above and beyond Title V, and above and beyond anything else that the public ended up paying for.
Excuse me, I'd like to talk, can I talk to the chair, I'm sorry. So, where I fall on this is that I really am not supportive of a regulation for conservation, I'm supportive of a bylaw. And if you can say that twenty-five foot can go in the bylaw, and within that bylaw you can put in a, um, a, a way to waive that, then that, you know, then that, if you're doing one, you can do the other. My point of view is that, coming from the Board of Health, I got on there, and there were so many overreaching regulations that were a detriment to this community, it took us six years to clean that up there and get something that people can actually file and not have to go, you know, pay thirty thousand dollars for a septic system, um, and that was all done through regulations. Um, also, but the difference there is that the Board of Health is elected, and that's, they can, they can be taken off at any, any three-year period, so, that's where I'm at with this. I feel that it should be bylaw if there, you, I mean, there's nothing stopping the Conservation Commission from coming up with guidelines and saying, when submitting these applications, it's in, it's, you know, in our interest if you submit so many copies, this, this, and this. They don't have to, but if they wanna come through easier, and they wanna be welcomed with open arms when they first come in, then I would look to do that. But as far as I am concerned, I wanna stay with, I wanna keep it in, in, uh, bylaw format rather than have regulations on us.
On one other point, you, you talked about the difference between Board of Health and CONSCOM, and Board of Health is the towns, they can do it.
Right.
Board of Selectmen has no set.
Right.
CONSCOM is not in the same position.
You're right.
And so that we do get a set, if we want one, we don't have a set.
Not if we give, not if we give them regulations?
Only through the, you should do it.
If you give them a bylaw, we don't give a, we don't have a set.
No, the bylaw goes to town.
Exactly.
The town gives them a bylaw.
The point, the other, the other point here is, you know, we, we spent some time on the sewer thing, and we said, well, we need to let the townspeople decide, and I think, yeah, this is the same situation. You know, do we want the, the Conservation Commission to be able to generate, uh, rules and regulations, or do we want everything from a bylaw, uh, perspective, when the bylaw is what the townspeople vote? And I, and I think we should let this dialogue go forward, and we should put it on town meeting.
But this is our decision, is whether or not we allow them to adopt rules and regulations, right? That's up to us, so.
No, it's a town meeting, it's a law meeting.
No, it's town meeting, no, it's town meeting, it's a warrant article, but there-
To authorize them to, or give them permission to authorize, or actually-
The town meeting article would have to grant them authority to adopt rules and regulations by amending the, by so amending the wetlands bylaw. So it's, it's still a bylaw amendment, but it's to authorize rules and regs for basically unspecified purposes. Now, what I was hearing in, in some of the earlier discussion was, what if, and I haven't asked town council this, I don't know if, if it's legal or not, but what if the bylaw, just as we, we have the Board of Selectmen vote to, you adopt fees, and then the Board of Selectmen approves it, 'cause that's the statutory formula under that, under, under section twenty-two F. What if we had that procedure in place for rules and regulations? That is, you adopt them and the selectmen approve them, we'd have to write the bylaw, we'd have to write this article that way, but, I mean, would that be an acceptable procedure?
I just wanna make two other points to address all you guys' concerns, um, one of the issues that we're facing too is they just changed the Wetlands Protection Act, to change a water notifications and, and items like that, if that occurs, that it affects what our bylaw states, we're gonna have to wait until a town meeting comes about in order to change that to go in line with the act, um, these rules and regulations would allow us to change them a little more quickly, um, that's one other reason in order for us to do these-
But you're talking about a law change, right? You're talking about a law change.
Yes, a law change, we can, but I'm just, I'm just stating that some towns have those notifications written in their bylaws, I'm, I'm just stating one of the reasons that a, a regulation would be a little bit easier than having to wait for a town meeting to go to a vote to amend these-
But when, when a regulation changes and that you're under, you know, you operate under certain regulations, you're still abides by those changes in those particular regulations, so you would have the authority to say, based on these changes in the regulation-
That's not true.
Not if it's written in the bylaw.
Not if it's in a bylaw, but if it's a regulation, it wouldn't be on the bylaw.
If it's in a regulation, we do, but not if it's written in the bylaw, we have to change the bylaw to state that.
To state what?
To state whatever the regulation changed in order from DEP, from the, from the Wetland Protection Act.
But there's nothing in the bylaw that prohibits you from, um, being in compliance with the law.
If you put in rules and regulations, and the, and the law changes at the state level-
Yeah.
They must go by the bylaw until such a time town meeting changes the rules and regulations in the bylaw. This is exactly the problem we have with the personnel board, is that the bylaw could not keep up with the changes that were happening in the real world.
Wait a minute, we can, we can write a bylaw that supersedes state law, is that true?
No.
No.
No, no, we can't.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I really like organized meetings, I ask Keith, I'm sorry, that's all.
If the state law changed and somehow made our, uh, language obsolete, then we would have trouble implementing our obsolete language. Anything that's in that bylaw, though, you still have to wait for another town meeting to go back and change it.
But, 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 but the, the precedent of the, um, law, the general law or a Massachusetts regulations takes precedent over our bylaw. We'd have all sorts of lawsuits, we're, we're, you know.
I, I do have, I, I do have, I'm just, I'm sorry.
Anna, did you have something? I'm sorry, but I'm chair, and I call on Anna, please, I'm sorry, she's been waiting very patiently to talk.
Okay, thank you, I'm Anna, mayor, um, Conservation Commission member, and, uh, I also live at twenty-nine Juniper Road in Littleton. Uh, I just wanna comment that, um, it can happen in a negative way, where if, if we have a regulation that, um, that people don't like, that it can easily be changed as well, so it can, it can be a positive force, that it can be changed quickly, if there's, if there's something that we implement in our regulations that, and, over time, doesn't seem like it works for people, we can change it easily to something that will work, so it's, um, so it can be positive and negative too, but it, it definitely can be a positive force in that people can come to our meetings and say, hey, this doesn't work for us, and, and can you, can you change it, instead of, um, having it not work for a year or so until the next town meeting?
Peter, you have something to add in?
Yes, I'd like to comment on that, uh, over the, across some long-term resident, not quite as long as Jim, I actually am a little bit older than him.
Yes, you're a little old.
But at any rate, the, uh, in my, uh, past history, we have had two wetlands bylaws that were brought up before town meeting, and they were supported by the Conservation Commission, and believe me, everybody liked the Conservation Commission, had nothing to do with the people on there. It turned out to be the wording in both of those, uh, attempts that would change the bylaw. The first one was, I think, in the early eighties, got shot down, the next one was in the mid-nineties, and that one got pulled because of, the language was so bad. You literally, at one point, they had, it was, someone brought up, he said, I wouldn't even be able to cut my grass next to the lake under this bylaw. So, I basically, now, these folks are pretty good folks, and I think Jim brought up the fact that fifteen years from now, might have a whole different crew of people interpreting and writing bylaws that the town has no control over.
And what we've learned on Board of Health is that, yes, you have to post it in the paper, and you have to, you know, post it so many days, but nobody reads it, and no one comes to the hearings. You know, and you don't have to post in the paper what the actual bylaw is, I don't think, you just have to post that you're having a public hearing on it. So, um, getting to my, my only point is that as a, so, so if we were going to a regulation format, I think the way that it would work for me is if, as a, an appointed board, a non-elected board, there would have to be some sort of checks and balances.
But that the check and bal-, oh-
Yeah, go ahead.
Check and balance would be, what Jim and I talked about yesterday could be, and what Keith mentioned before, an appointed board, let them write the rules and regulations, and as that check, they just come back to us to check it. Not that we have any knowledge, at least you have one, you have one way of coming back, so it's not something that's really, I don't know.
Right, right, we don't know knowledge, but if they put in a hundred and fifty-foot no-build zone, then we kinda know.
I think that's a good compromise.
So, we provide a check and balance.
Yeah.
We're gonna find out if you can do it through town council, though, right?
The, the main point, what we're looking at, is we don't wanna tell you what they can't do without these regulations and adding a no-build. Right now, as it states, someone could go ahead, build a house two feet from the edge of a lake, and DEP could, or we can deny it, DEP can overrule us.
Which is happening.
Because we have nothing in our, we have no detailed regulation or even a bylaw that states that that cannot happen. We had something, not to that extreme, we did have something similar within eight feet, um, that we denied, that went to DEP and got overruled. Now, I've been here for five years, I've only ever written two denials, that was one, that it didn't get upheld through DEP, and that's what happened, there's gonna be a house built within eight feet from the edge of wetland, because we don't have anything written to keep that from happening, and that is our goal. Our goal is not to say, you can't plant a tree, you can't cut your lawn, our goal is to protect what we're appointed to protect.
Right, but the Wetlands Protection Act is built in there, that there's certain protections in there, excuse me, excuse me, please don't, no, no, I'm sorry. And, you know, I'm looking at, if we're putting further restrictions, we're putting further restriction on what people can do with their land. I understand if I put a house within twenty feet or within ten feet of a, of a wetland, there's certain compensation in the Wetlands Protection Act that needs to compensate for that. But to put restrictions on people's use of the land, that's one of the things that I have a difficulty with, um, so, and I don't know what the no-build, I think, I think this needs to be, um, I think there needs to be something more specific, and I think we need to look at it and maybe not go back for any, only with, for a special town meeting.
Basically, we're kind, that's an example, we're just trying to get into the position where we can be allowed to write some regulations and bring them before you, and you can agree or not agree with us, is basically what we're trying to do. That will probably set some point surface, and we'll do more discussion about it.
Well, there could also be a working session between you and Joe or whoever to say, hey, here's what the commission's thinking, you know, what do you, what do you think is one selectman, you know, something like that.
But we need to have this, I believe, go through town meeting to allow us to do the regulations.
Well, if we, yeah, if-
I would say, have Keith look into whether they can, we can insert this with the little thingy out on the end, subject to the final approval of the Board of Selectmen, then, then we have that check.
I, I've seen-
If town council can approve the, the, the process, they generate the regulation, and it gets vetted to us after that, and I, I think we've got something that'll work.
Yeah, so, Mr. Chairman, do you feel that, that we have a work to start here?
I think you almost, you did it tonight, you just, you did the fees.
So if we can have that same, that process.
So, while we table this until we find out in town council, we get it next month.
We don't, because we want-
Mr. Chairman, is this something that you want definitely on this, or the, yeah?
Well, we can, we can definitely want on this.
Yes, yes, we don't got a problem with it.
Insert it with the lang-, with the language of selectmen approval, and that's how the warrant article will read, town council will write it up, and we'll, that hopefully survives the attorney general's review, so, first and find out.
So, so we're not including the twenty-five no-build at this point?
No, it's just gonna be that, we're coming up with the authorization to- The rules and regs subject to approval by the selectmen.
All right. Do you want me to take a crack at it? Joe, you were working on it.
Move that the board of selectmen vote to insert the warrant for May sixth, twenty thirteen, annual town meeting, an article to amend the Wetlands Protection bylaw, to authorize the adoption of rules and regulations by the commission and approved by the board of selectmen, subject to approval as to form by town council.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there anything for your last salesmen, Mr. Chairman?
We're having a problem with finding someone to hold the CR on the forty B for the wetlands portion of it. And I don't know where that's gonna go. Would you folks would like to hold it?
No, we can't.
The conservation is not sure we want to hold it, we think it's gonna be a real headache.
The Conservation Trust is one place.
I've tried Conservation Trust, Conservation SubBay Valley Trustees, Mass Audubon, I've contacted town of Acton, who has similar projects with Omni. They checked all their resources, and they came back negative.
Can you explain the?
The Cleveland Forest Three Foundation is another.
Conservation restriction, what your, what the concern is?
You've got a whole bunch of apartments right next to it, and how are you gonna police it with people walking through this? It's natural heritage, endangered species type situation.
So the conservation restriction says, just that, it says what you can and can't do in there? And once the apartments are built, someone has to make sure they're not doing it?
Also the homeowners, the ones that are gonna own the houses, what is it, eighteen or nineteen houses?
Twenty-one lots, I think.
Twenty-one lots. They're supposed to be financially responsible for keeping, maintaining this and protecting this wetland.
One more time, I was distracted, go ahead, sorry. So.
But there's a conservation, the CR, that where somebody's gotta hold to oversee the whole thing. And nobody wants to hold it.
How much, what does that entail? I mean, what happens if, I mean, I mean, does that mean you have to go out and inspect every quarter, and?
Every year, somebody has to. And then if the stuff that happens, somebody's gotta be in a position to enforce whatever it takes, legal enforcement.
So basically, you can, you can pass enforcement on to anybody? Is what you're saying? Someone holds a conservation restriction.
It's.
Whoever holds a conservation restriction is responsible for policing and fighting and things like that. And who issues the permit, who issues the initial permit? That requires a conservation restriction?
The developer, I suppose you guys in that package, it's you okayed.
The planning board.
Webber did it.
Planning board.
Wait, I want to clarify one thing. That, that the conservation restriction, the developer has designed, is also governed by a homeowners association, at least the draft agreement that they've drafted in. And they said that the apartment, the owner of the apartment complex and the, all the individual owners of the subdivision all pool together and into this homeowners fund. And that, and they are the ones who are supposed to do the inspections yearly, but we're supposed to back it up and, and maybe do duplicative inspections. But they, they've done a lot, they've done a lot to back this up in terms of even making the homeowners able to put liens on properties to get that action done, to clean up the, so there's, there's a lot they did to help us, but it's still gonna be on us, partly on us, to, to make sure that cleanups happen.
Well, that means sending Heather out to walk it.
Is this intentionally coming out, coming at you?
Oh, it is. We've been trying to pass it off on anybody we could find, and that hasn't happened. We just see it as a real boondoggle with the, with so many people living in such a dense area.
Keith, can you shine a light on it?
I'm only finding out now that they're, that they're resistant to holding the CR.
Yeah, Donna has planning board and conservation trust?
Right, I did talk to Omni this morning, I gave some suggestions, which I'll share with you outside. The, the issue is, you know, this is the fourteen acres of land, the natural heritage says, this sensitive habitat, the blue spot salamander. So the, so someone owns the land, but also, which might be Omni or the Ressini, or could be another organization, and there's a requirement to have a conservation restriction on it, which is given to maybe a government group or nonprofit conservation, called a nonprofit conservation organization. And that organization should have enough capacity so they can go out and monitor how the blue spots salamanders are doing. But as was mentioned, it's a densely populated area, because you have a hundred and ninety units on one side, and you have thirty-one houses on the other side. So it is probably gonna take a lot of work and a lot of education of the people in the area. So typically what happens is money is set aside for, quote, the stewardship, the monitoring of it, and also possible legal enforcement. So if someone approaches upon it, then you, you know, correct the situation. Well, often you need a lawyer, and it costs money. So, you know, it's sort of challenging, it's disjointed, it's not connected to anything else. So no one has any other area nearby there, except maybe one organization. And isn't just once, one year, two years, it's forever, ever, and ever, it's perpetuity, real long time. So a lot of costs attached to it, that, that's the concern. And, you know, some organizations look at, thought, okay, they have nothing else in the area, it's gonna take a lot, lot of work, and it doesn't meet their criteria for being a grantee.
Somebody, 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 somebody's land trust, that's their opinion, it's just too far.
Right.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, that's why, when you said it's not conducive to their work, they don't have anything else in the area, they don't want it.
And they're sort of, they're doing a lot of other work right now, helping us out in Littleton, so, you know, be glad for what they're doing for us. And, you know, it may, well, you need a professional person trained to look at the habitat for blue spot salamanders, and someone might have to be hired for that.
National Heritage doesn't want it?
Uh, no, National Heritage will make, it made the restriction put in place, but they will not do it. I mean, you know, as you, well, no, for state government, it's very thin. There are not enough people to do all the tasks for them, and they, they don't do it, they insist it's done by someone. So whoever does hold it, might actually hire someone, at some hourly rate, go out and look at, how you do the education.
So basically, it sounds like the homeowners, the homeowners would be required to fund it, but there needs to be someone checking upon it.
So, so how about making it in part of the restriction to have that association to pay for your enforcement?
They do.
That's all kind of in fine print and everything.
Okay, so you can go out and hire somebody and say, once a year, it's gonna cost the association a thousand dollars to have this professional go out and make sure the salamanders.
I, I think the same issue you had with giving us the opportunity to have restricted regulations, the board could change, that's, I think, our issue with holding it, is we don't know what the board's gonna look like in twenty, thirty years, and they're gonna be stuck with the backing of this conservation restriction. Even with that legal items there, it's still the conservation commission's restriction.
I get it, but if it's written into the deeds of those properties, property owners, into the deeds responsible for the conservation restrictions and this association, either make them write it into the bylaws of the association and into your, into your restriction so that they will be responsible for the enforcement of this commission contingent upon this commission hiring a professional to go out and do the yearly inspection.
Mr. Chairman, would you like to talk to Dawn, see what update he has for you, and then possibly come back in the future and see if there's anything else? And then maybe, I mean, you gotta make some, if you don't want it, you have to make some sort of request, or we have to get through this, I don't think we're gonna do it tonight.
No.
So I appreciate the warning, but the preview, if you want to come back.
I believe if we accept it, you guys got to approve it.
Yeah, but I'm saying, I think, do you want to, Kenny, like I said, just get better information, not better information, it sounds like you guys are.
What Jim just said is exactly what, what was proposed by the developer. It's exactly what, exactly what you just said.
So, I mean, if we have town council take a look at that document to make sure it's enforceable in perpetuity forever, when this commission changes, they know, because it's gonna be every year the same person or the same commission, that way their, the responsibility is taken off of you guys, and it's being paid for by the association. I think that that should be a doable document. We then can own the restriction and not be responsible for that inspection, so to speak, other than assigning a professional to go out and do a watch.
Would I get a consensus of the board that you don't mind that we hold that, hold that CR? Or would you rather we can find somebody else to do it?
I think that's a little tricky ground we have to get through here first, because we have to look at the restrictions, because that homeowners association is fundamentally created because there's a shared sewer system. Now, so those will, will.
No.
The way DEP requires the funding to fund the sewer system and upkeep, it's coming out of that same pot of money, you may have a restriction on your head.
Why don't you, why don't you, you want to skip to the time now, or you want to go back?
Homeowners Association set up for snowpiling, it's set up for a lot of different things, whatever, community of those houses.
That's why I say write it into the bylaw, make them write it into their bylaws so that they can't change it and have it tied into a deed.
We're not gonna get a settlement.
No, but I would just kind of, if, what you folks were kind of thinking, if we explored it and went along with it, you'd kind of back us up on this thing, or?
Well, I mean, what's the default position? Where, yeah, where's Joe?
Sure.
Protect the town, and I'll back you up.
You'll definitely get copies of the stuff from the.
Let's get it to town council for review to make sure it's enforceable.
Because right now, the restriction says that the town is holding it.
Oh, then there's a homeowners association, you have to review as well.
The way it's worded.
But just remember, where there's water and there's kids, you know where they're gonna be.
But you have that nearly enforcement.
All right, all right, so, well, I mean, we're pretty much, Billy's coming back. Do you have, I mean, a comment that's gonna be, can you do it in ten seconds?
Right, as Jim says, you'll have to review the conservation restriction. All conservation restrictions get reviewed by the selectmen, so you have a chance to do that. One, this is sort of evolved, and Omni has sort of agreed to various things. Originally, they didn't have a homeowners association. They realized they needed some funding for someone to monitor, so that, that's an improvement. That, it's a negotiation, originally that wasn't in place at all. So it's coming together, but it's a problem to be solved.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Paul.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I help you a second?
Yeah, I'm deserving a meeting. Being informed. Thank you. I do have a question about something that was in the paper, about the board notes about Castle and the Trees. This big project does not include the playground, is that correct?
No. Right, right, does not include the Castle and the Trees playground.
Because whatever, and maybe it was misinterpretation by the paper, but they said that you granted the park and rec permission to use some gift fund for the rent. And it specifically said Castle and the Trees.
I think they associate that whole.
My concern there is we are trying to privately, Castle and the Trees is private. We are privately raising funds to rebuild the playground. I don't want people to read that and think that the town is rebuilding the playground, and then we won't get funds.
Our, yeah, our vote, our vote didn't specify that, and we have little control over what the newspaper writes.
So you, like, right, I'm just clarifying.
Talk to the paper, this is not their first misinterpretation.
No, I'm clarifying that it's not, so Castle and the Trees, as according to the town, is separate from three hundred King Street renovation.
My understanding, Keith, yes?
I don't think so, I stand in on those, and that's all kind of that, we're looking at tying them with the masons and possibly the lot next to it by the, using the, by the historical society from our, from our house. That whole area was involved.
It is, but I think the, what was shown there as the limit of the Castle and the Trees, which has a little three-foot fence around it, is not slated to be touched yet.
It could be, I mean, they didn't bring that up, but I thought everything was changing on that.
Park and Rec Commission would be who you'd want to meet with to go over that. Yeah, yeah.
The, if I could just interject again, I just mean, I think, who's the fellow that's, Rick, Ryder? Ripley, Brian Rick.
Brian Richter, yeah.
Brian Richter, he was trying to get a group of people together, one from each, like the Water Health, masons, park and rec, you know? Because that was just a bird's eye view, that's not the bylaw.
I know that Park and Rec wants to make sure that what they're designing for their property is in harmony with the surrounding property, so maybe that was read too much into it or something.
Because in my understanding, that Castle and the Trees is saying a separate entity, and the Park and Rec is doing everything around it.
That's my understanding too.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to clarify that. I, I know that there's misprints in the paper all the time, so that was my.
Not really.
I'm just trying to clarify, because that was our understanding.
I made a debut in the paper, misquoted the first time ever in the paper.
All right, thank you.
See you, sir. All right, where are we going to?
Quick update, that there's no changes in the budget.
There's no update.
No update on the budget.
There haven't been any changes, we're still looking at the, the same deficit downs, but I'm, of ninety-seven thousand. But I'm hopeful that we'll close that the end of this month. I'll have a better projection on our third quarter revenues. We'll have the school committee's budget formally voted, hopefully, and we might have some better state aid projections. So I'm, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to wrap everything up by the end of March.
Speaking of budget, just for a second, I haven't, we haven't been in a meeting in a while that we can talk about this, but Alex, at a previous meeting, you said there was something about, when we had the gap at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I thought you said something about that if we had supported your strict hiring freeze policy, that this would have been no problem, that you would have made up that three hundred and fifty thousand dollars? Is that close to what you said?
Essentially, I guess you're right. But way back three, three, four boards ago, when we initially did the hiring freeze. And at that time, I was on record in every vote as no when it came to hire somebody. And no vote, strict enforcement of hiring freeze. Had I prevailed, and I didn't, then there would be a number of employees, we would not have now. And I believe that that would have found significant savings in that. We would have had a cluster to deal with as far as trying to run the town with all, all those people. But we, you know, we would have.
So you would have closed us three hundred and fifty? Okay, so you're going back only, sir, are you saying you could have?
No, I'm not going back.
All right, so.
It would not work then.
Do you have any, but no, but you've said.
You had an opportunity then, that opportunity's.
No, I'm not saying that, but basically you're saying if you had, if we had done what you wanted to, we could have saved three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
The number three hundred and fifty, whatever number we were.
Right, okay, do you have any, do you have any numbers to back up about number of hiries, or, you know, how much the salary is?
We have to do all the votes of people we hired, and if they weren't hired, we'd have, that's what we would have saved, and it would have come to whatever amount was.
But you haven't, but, and you said it was more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but you haven't done the math to figure if it is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
No, we didn't do the math.
No, I'm just saying, you made a claim without, that made you look really good, and it was unsubstantiated, that's all. That's why, you know.
And you've made similar claims about the road, flowering and sanding too, were unsubstantiated, so.
Let's talk about it.
I don't understand the point of this discussion.
Because, well, I just, because he made a claim that it was unsubstantiated, and then when you say if we hired the, if we stuck to the strict hiring freeze policy, but then once it came to, once we got rid of that strict hiring freeze, you still voted to hire everybody back, back, so it just seems like a contradiction to what you originally.
What's the point, Ted?
The point is, I think you made, I want to get a clarification of your claim and whether or not it was substantiated, because you said you could save three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
My claim is very simple. I am of the opinion that had we enforced a strict hiring freeze, that we would have saved enough money that we would not have a negative balance right now.
Okay.
That's based on five years ago, okay? I no longer believe that that's possible.
If we started today, you mean?
Yes.
Right.
We can't, we can't close it now, we have to have layoffs.
Right.
That was the premise behind all my votes for years about, no, we're not gonna hire, no, we're not gonna hire. Simply that, and it's my belief, and I don't need to substantiate my beliefs, that we would have saved, if we did not hire anybody, we would have saved the amount of money that we're in deficit right now.
Can I interject one thing? When you talk about people being hired, I thought the only people we hired, actually, one would justify it, didn't change our salary.
Full-time employees.
They fit within the level.
That's after, that's after, after we got rid of the hiring freeze and transitioned to this.
No, it's during the hiring freeze. Okay.
We're still on the hiring freeze. My point to all that was, was that we had a hiring freeze, but we were still hiring.
Right.
The policy needed to be where we have it now, where it isn't called a hiring freeze.
Right.
It's called an evaluation.
Right.
So, so what we did is abort that, we said we're gonna have a hiring freeze, and then we hired everybody that came up to be hired.
Yeah, that was one of the first things I wanted to hear, right, and we changed it, yeah.
And now, and so it's not a hiring freeze, and I don't believe a hiring freeze would work now.
Yeah, okay.
All right, there we go.
And I know you're all done.
So, did they vote today?
Collective bargaining?
They, well, tomorrow, but because of the snow.
They're gonna be out tomorrow.
So if they ratify it Thursday, we'll bring it forward on. So if they ratify on Thursday, we'll bring it forward on next Monday.
By the way, Monday, I'm leaving for Charlotte, North Carolina on Saturday, so I won't be here on Monday. I'd like to make a request that the item that is scheduled for the police department issue be moved because I would like to be involved in that discussion instead of next Monday.
That was the summary report of that?
That is correct. And I'd be very interested where in that discussion.
I don't have a problem with that.
So your next meeting after that is April 8th.
It's Tuesday.
So we'll reschedule that.
Thank you, board members. That's it, maybe go to the gym. Come on, give me a second, will you?
No, no one wants to go home?
Second.
Well, you don't have to go home, but you can't.
Yeah. I was in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.